This is a great methodology to use and get us by some kind, maybe allow us to do some other things with the capital budget that you have. And if we can get three years or five years or seven years, that's more than we've had in the past.
Yeah.
And it gives us a chance to grow some of the other parts of the village.
How big of a core of players do you think there is out that would use this?
Um, there's a tremendous amount of interest. I would tell you that we have had over the last four weeks, we've averaged about four courts playing full time for two to three hours.
Okay.
Last week, we had five courts going. And pickleball is actually one of the fastest growing sports in America right now because they play it in the school system. Tom Miller I saw came in the, he's in the backyard. He remembers teaching it when he was in the school district. We have some youngsters that have come out that are twelve, thirteen years old. We've had some folks that are probably in their seventies come out. So it's a whole range of people. And please come on out, anchor, we're gonna be out there tomorrow night. We got panels, balls, and nets, and we'll teach you how to play.
So does this make people faster? Because I know that would help Tom a lot.
Uh, I don't know if it makes them faster, but makes them thirstier by the end of the night.
We're asked to put pickleball on all the courts. I mean, like, we've been doing Fort Atkinson's courts for the last twenty years. Anyway, we completed a couple of those, I think, three years ago. And Scott just called me today and he goes, want pickleball put on two of the four courts? Again, because he said we have people asking all the time. So it's definitely a growing, growing thing that they want it on all the courts.
And we would put six pickleball courts on the three tennis courts. As we have right now, if you go out there, we have three or six courts.
Fantastic.
Anybody wish to make a motion?
I'll make a motion. I have a final question for staff after.
Okay. It's a motion to accept the proposal for twenty-three thousand dollars.
I make a motion to accept the proposal as is and authorize staff to transfer the funds to this project.
I'll second that.
Okay.
Um, do you have a written warranty? Then you could provide the staff.
Yeah. I don't have one. Okay.
But we'll have to contract the warranty.
Yeah, sure.
Yeah, I just would like the staff to approve the warranty.
Yeah.
Since we don't have it before I say it.
Sure.
Well, I got, do I have one question for Mike? On his proposal that says fifty percent down, signed contract, do we do that?
Um, sometimes, I mean, we typically don't do that because, you know, we pay our bills. We're not a private company. But if the board, board approves this, you're basically approving the fifty percent down.
Okay, that's not gonna...
I think it's okay.
Any issues with anything?
Okay.
And Mike will check on the three quotes. Anything else?
I have a question. Now, the tennis court that's over at the high school, that is owned by the high school there?
Yes.
They have to do that themselves?
Yeah.
Okay.
Those will have been rebuilt, so.
Okay.
Yeah, that's all set. Anything else? Okay, we have most a second to approve the proposal for twenty-three thousand dollars for rebuilding the tennis courts. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Close, motion carries. Thanks. I appreciate your approach and I appreciate the way you worked through the process to make it work and your real good presentation tonight, too. Thanks, Penny, also for coming along.
What happens now? How does this, how does it go forward?
The proposal, the contract would come from Denny to staff. And then that starts the process. I'll work with Mark on the time to get it done. I'll sign the contract and away we go.
And we need to get you the warranty.
Well, the warranty be part of the contract.
It should, yes.
Yeah.
Okay, so you can make sure that's a badge.
Yep.
And can I ask a question? When do you play it?
We play Tuesday nights and Thursday nights at six thirty.
Okay.
Weather permitting. And then there's people out there all the time. We've been out there three, four, or five times a week.
And you don't charge at all?
No, no, no. You see us playing, stop by. We're gonna put a panel in your hand and you're gonna be playing.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Did anyone else want to comment who is here? It looked like they kind of took care of everything and you got what you came from, came for us, so, okay, great.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mike.
Just getting the auditor on the phone, Steve.
Yeah, so we're looking at going back to three B for the auditors, so it's what Mike is doing.
Hey, Joe, it's Mike Grace, how you doing? I'm gonna put you on the speakerphone. I have the board here, one second, please. Okay, Joe, you still there?
Yep, I'm here.
Okay, welcome, Joe.
All right, thank you. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
My name's Joe Hassan, the audit manager in charge of the village's audit. And in your pack, you should have a couple documents from me. One is, looks like a memo, which has information on there, and there should be three graphs. And I'll just go through the memo and kind of look for the graphs as they go.
Okay.
The first thing I want to talk about is the general fund. The general fund balance increased one hundred and forty-three thousand dollars in two thousand and fifteen. And the general fund balance at the end of two thousand and fourteen was two million three hundred and eighty thousand dollars, of which one million six hundred and ninety-nine was unassigned. And the unassigned portion of your fund balance represents about thirty percent of your total general fund expenses. So the general fund's fund balance is broken into several categories, mostly related to how easily they can be used. Some are non-spendable, some are assigned to various things. So you have one point six million dollars of your fund balance that's unassigned or available for use. And that represents about thirty percent of your annual expenditures, which is a benchmark that a lot of municipalities look at it. Usually anything over twenty-five percent is a good, so you guys, your fund balance is in a good spot. To look at the first chart there, it says Village of Oregon General Fund Balance. And the blue bars are the total general fund balance over the last five years. And you can see it subtly increases. And the red bars are the unassigned portion of your fund balance. And you can see that fluctuates through your year based on certain things. But at the end of fourteen, they're both in a strong position. Moving on to the memo, the next paragraph, the general fund revenues were over budgeted by three hundred and forty thousand dollars, but expenses were also over budgeted by about a hundred and sixty thousand dollars. The village has a good job monitoring the budget and making amendments, but in two thousand and fourteen, there was some unexpected legal expenses that resulted in the budget being overspent. Now, in total, everything was okay. There was plenty of additional revenue to cover that. But since there wasn't an amendment done for those expenses, we did have to include a finding in our audit report that said that it was overspent. We also included a management response to sort of explain the situation. So I don't think going forward, there should be any ramifications of that. Just something that we had to report. And the next two graphs show the general fund revenue and general fund expenditures, kind of the breakdown of where and when it comes from and how it's spent. The first graph there is the revenue for the year. You can see that about sixty-eight percent of the revenue in the general fund comes from tax and special assessments. And the next largest portion, seventeen percent, comes from intergovernmental revenue, which is the shared revenue from the state and transportation, everything from that line. Now, the next graph shows the two thousand and fourteen general fund expenditures. You can see about forty-four percent of the expenses goes to public, nineteen goes to general government, and about twenty goes to teacher activities, which is park, recreation, education. And then back to the memo, the net position of the village as a whole is a hundred and twenty-seven thou, excuse me, a hundred and twenty-seven million dollars, which represents the total assets plus liabilities. And that's everything combined together, all the funds, all the assets, all the data taken into consideration. So it's a strong net position. Moving on, I just want to talk about the water utility quick. The PSC, the Public Service Commission, uses rate of return to judge sort of the health of the water utility and if the rates are set appropriately. You can see on the memo there, the water rate of return for the last three years. Two thousand and fourteen, it was four point seven percent, thirteen, six point six, two thousand and twelve, eight point five. Now, the state average of that, of the rate of return is about two to three percent. So relative to that, you guys are in a good position. But over the last ten years, the four point seven percent is probably the lowest your rate of return has been. You guys usually try to hover between five to eight percent. So there's a couple of ways to remedy that, and increasing rates is one of them. And I'll just talk about different ways the rates can be increased. There's a simplified rate increase, and your last one of those was done in two thousand and eleven. And there's a full rate increase, and the last time you did that was two thousand and four. So a simplified rate increase, it increases everything by a flat three percent, and it's much less administrative work. And a full rate increase takes a more in-depth look into all aspects of the utility, and it looks at what revenue should be, and it adjusts the rates accordingly. So I would say that over the last years periodically, you've done simplified rate increases, which has captured rate of return high. And usually you only have to do a full rate increase if it's been a while, any rate increase is done, or if there's a large project coming up that you know you're gonna need additional funding for. So last time you did simplified, one in two thousand and eleven, your rate of return was in the five and a half percent. And now it's at four point seven percent. So I think it's just something to talk about and maybe look into a possible rate increase. And then the next point there in the memo, besides the budget finding I mentioned before, we didn't notice any compliance violations or internal control issues during the audit. And then finally, we'd just like to thank Lisa and Mike for, and the staff for all their hard work. Lisa is very prepared for us, so it makes things go very smooth when we're there. So that's all I have, and I'd be happy to answer any questions if anybody has any.
Any questions, anyone? Jerry?
Hi, Joe, this is Jerry Bolick. I got a question about fund balance. I see the fund balance increased significantly in two thousand and fourteen. Unfortunately, it looks like unassigned fund balance increased accordingly. Do you have an explanation for that? It just, the...
I was having a little trouble hearing that, can Mike, can you just...
Sure. Um, what trustee Bolick is asking, Joe, is explain why the fund balance went up last year.
From thirteen to fourteen?
Yes, correct.
Off the top of my head, I could tell you exactly why it went up.
I think, I think part of it is the ATC money.
Oh, okay.
So we had, we had the unexpected legal expenses that Joe was talking about, but then we had the unexpected revenue.
Right.
From the easements we sold to ATC, which...
So that would explain why the unassigned...
That's part of it.
It is similar.
Yeah, the unassigned, the general fund has some advances that it owes at different months. And when those are paid off, or increase or decrease, that changes the unassigned month balance. And I think that's what part of the increase from thirteen to fourteen, the unassigned month balance.
Yeah.
Other questions? Anyone trustees? I don't see any more questions, Joe.
Okay.
So thanks for your report, and like you, we'd like to thank Mike and Lisa for the good job they do in making this all work well for us, so.
All right, thank you.
And thanks for your good work. Good night.
Yep, good night.
Thanks, Joe.
Okay, we'll go on to three D, discussion with Jamie Bush regarding additional TIF assistance for building...
We should accept the audit.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's okay.
Trying to get this done.
I'll move to accept. Second.
I should know that for nine years, right? So any further discussion or questions? Most a second, we have to approve the audit. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Close, motion carries. Thank you. So item D, discussion with Jamie Bush regarding additional TIF assistance for building the banquet hall at Headquarters Restaurant in TIF number four. Jamie, welcome.
Hello. Hello, I'm at Swarfield, Kansas, in college. I've actually had, you clarify, support.
Okay.
Got you.
That's all you need.
That's all. Well, what would you like? I know that I sent the letter...
Yep, so Jamie and I met last, well, actually, Matt and I first communicated the board's offer to Jamie on Tuesday or Wednesday last week. And then Jamie came and we met and I asked him to put in writing, which is in your packet, his proposal that essentially if the village granted him a sixty-eight thousand dollar TIF loan, he would not ask for that, that funding until he was able to occupy the building. And that if the village had to take a loan out, the interest on that loan would not be paid by the TIF, but paid by the partnership. Basically, yeah.
That Dave, you had talked also, sent you on the letter, so I don't...
Yes, I'm, yep. Explaining about the letter of credit.
There seems to be some, there was a thought that if the letter of credit, I mean, that would pull up a borrowing capacity, but it wasn't the case in this case. That letter of credit, they told me, my credit was terribly low. So because it has a zero balance, it was never something we were ever planning on using. We always planned on building like a facility, so it was sort of a placeholder until we could figure out what it was gonna happen. So it was never intentionally, it was not actually a casualty, it wasn't a crime. So that explains that.
Yeah. That was something we felt we needed to explore.
Yeah, no, I, yeah, when I talked to Matt about it, I'm like, that's not what it is. It's not sitting on like a pile of money by the front.
Yeah. Did you have a question, Jerry?
Actually, I do. I'm just trying to decide how to phrase it. Actually, I'll ask staff a question first. We're talking sixty-eight thousand dollars here.
That's what Jamie's asking for, correct?
Do we have that, that amount of funds in the TIF?
No. No, TIF, just like the downtown TIF, TIF four is a distressed TIF, so we'd have to borrow for that. Because, because the, the, and I explained this to Jamie. So he debills it and he gets it built by, he's also, I should also indicate, he's actually, maybe for a couple of months' extension on the, on the...
Because of Dan, when you can remember, last time he bought in December, so I said, you can get two months, just what I want.
Right.
If December going, we got protection, we're ten, we're, we definitely have a bigger side of two months.
Right, so which could affect the, even affect even more when we'll see the full value hit, hit the assessed rule, and that's why I have the table in there. Assuming that the banquet hall is actually built by the end of the year, we don't, we would not get any increment from the banquet hall in two thousand and sixteen. It wouldn't happen till two thousand and seventeen.
So we'd have to do some borrowing?
We most likely would have to borrow.
Okay, and in what manner?
Probably a state trust fund loan or a local bank loan.
Okay. And Jamie's... See that as a problem?
No, no, because no matter what, the village, the point I was trying to make, the village is gonna have to cover some of the money. We're covering some of the initial loan already until the, until the increments there, now we're gonna cover, well, you're gonna have to cover more. What Jamie's offering to do is to pay the interest on the loan, but the village will be fronting this, this loan for three to four years.
Okay. And as I understand it, Jamie, this, the amount you're asking for now is a, consists of a fifty thousand dollar loan that you...
When we first did this, yeah, we...
Yeah, when you, your final construction draw and about eighteen thousand dollars in the parking lot.
Yeah, that's...
Okay. Is that something you could document for staff?
Yeah, I mean, Dan, okay, I'll refer to something, I don't know, I mean, I know I've given it a document.
I don't think I see that.
Well, I can, so.
Maybe I'm not sure.
The only reason I ask is we've got that but-for qualification whenever we do TIF funding. In other words, but for this assistance, the project wouldn't happen. And the way I see it, if you can provide this documentation, that'll satisfy the but-for yourself.
Point, Jerry.
Okay. So it sounds like we can do the financing.
And so when, after Matt looked at Jamie's last email to me, you know, he and I talked about it, as he couldn't be here tonight, and he really said, at this point, it's the board's, obviously, it's always the board's, it really is the board's decision, what do you want to do with this?
Okay.
And as I recall, it's like a seven-year payback?
Well, if you, if you look at the, I don't have my pad up, but there's a, it's under three D.
Right.
It shows you, but again, this is assuming that one-one-sixteen, the banquet hall is there and he's occupying it. So then, so you're looking at two thousand and twenty-one, two thousand and twenty, somewhere in there. What will happen, thank you, Mickey, what will happen eventually is that some more of the increment from the restaurant will start paying off the banquet, so. So it's, like I said, it's, it's four, I would say about a four-year payback for the village.
I think I understand why the one-one-sixteen is important, because that starts the property tax clock.
Yep, the full value hits.
The full value, and that way, that'll be due in seventeen.
Correct.
Yeah. Because if we wait into sixteen, then it won't, it'll be, it'll delay it.
But even if he's two months, nine, you know, ninety or some percent of the building will probably be done by the, by the, but it will delay that a little bit possibly. The thing is, you know, when you look at this analysis, we're holding the tax rate at twenty dollars and fourteen cents, which is probably not gonna, it's gonna go up or down probably the next four or five years. We're using a one percent increase on the value of the, the restaurant, the banquet hall. These are, these are pretty conservative numbers, and typically, we do that and we do the TIF analysis.
Still, that's a pretty good, pretty quick payback.
It's not, I think it's pretty healthy, yeah. And I think the fact that, I think Jamie's idea was worthwhile, or was a good idea that rather than the village giving them the money, or him the money while he's building it, we don't give him that loan until the banquet hall's done.
Right.
And he's, he's moving into it.
No, I remember when we, when Jamie first brought the whole project forward, that was a big part of this, the banquet hall was, was key to everyone's decision, at least most people's decision on this. So I support this project. I'll bow to any other questions now.
Anyone else?
I have a question. I'm, I'm new to the board since Headquarters was built, but I was asked a question by somebody in the community. I didn't have the answer to it, so this is an education piece for me. When the original TIF was negotiated for the building of Headquarters, was the banquet hall part of that conversation?
It was.
And just catch me up, because I wasn't at the last board meeting. So what's caused you to come back to the board to ask for additional TIF money beyond what was originally agreed to?
We have some time.
And if this is a recap for everybody else, then that's fine.
So two thousand and twelve, we originally started the project, or brought the project to the board. We had some problems with getting the land, the value of the land, what the land was actually assessed at, how much it would cost to make the land buildable when we did our original site testing. We found that it's very poor soil conditions, clay, and then water deep, like about four and a half feet. We actually have another pot actually adjacent to it. That lot, actually, we were moving forward on that lot until the new director from Jamesville actually came in and said that we're up, we're up to twenty percent, get on the entire project, so. Away from that, I actually did the financing, went back to this project on this site. Brett, with that, you had, head of the chamber, he actually did, to make one more run at this. But when we did that last run, we went back and we said, what do we know? And the problem is, no one's gonna get any soil. We knew we were gonna have to surcharge it soon. We knew that, but we didn't know anything beyond that. And when I said, from the board, I said, I know there's gonna be other problems, I just don't know what they're gonna be. But without any knowledge of what they are, we couldn't request anything. We were basically saying, the only thing we know we can request is the surcharge. So that was all we could request. And that put us literally to the apex of our money. We had no room for anything else. So then, when we started actually moving soil, and the DNR showed up, and they said, we think that this may be a wetland, but we need all of your testing. That had originally been done in two thousand and six, but they have, open to five years that they're allowed to actually decide. If it's within five years, they cannot move back, because after five years, they have the option to move back. They came back in two thousand and eleven, and UVT actually scraped the entire soil off and actually bricked it out of the flood plain. So I mean, I'm like, two years ago, they just did this. So I brought that to the DNR, and they said, oh, well, if that happened, then it can't be, so we'll give you your thing. And they kept delaying our process, and we kept having to get, ask for extra engineering. Actually, Mark, Mark and I were having a conversation with some pictures that we showed them, and we sent letters back and forth, and they kept telling us it was gonna happen, and they kept delaying us. And so we kept getting further pushback, further pushback, and there was extra costs because they wanted more. And then we actually had to have to revisit the entire site, and it started from square one, and they went, okay, it's not a wetland. This ended up being about a three and a half month delay, which showed actually then no longer, the building, the summer, we actually programmed it in September. If you remember that winter, it was the winter, we were actually about one hundred and twenty days, never going above zero degrees, or about thirty degrees. We had to run three heaters nonstop all winter long. I was getting four or five thousand dollar electric bills, or gas bills, just to run these summer pipes and freezers. We had all this going on, we were running snow removal. We had to redo our parking lot in two different phases because they couldn't get asphalt anymore, so it was too late in the season. So they were like, but, or we could open without asphalt. I thought, try to open without asphalt, but then we lost that, the winter was more idea. In the end, it ended up pushing us about two hundred thousand dollars over our money. Well, Dave and UVT, they were sort of on the hunt, because they were doing SBA five or four of them. So with that type of loan, the SBA comes in and actually states to you, how much is it gonna cost? And how much are you gonna do? And then they wait until after you open, and they prove, you have to prove what you're doing. And if you aren't honest with them, and you can't show them what you said you were going to do was what you did, so they won't fund you. So then the bank is on the hook for the whole thing. You don't have this government, like...
Guaranteed.
Yeah, exactly. And so the bank was not, they were motivated. They were motivated to help me get the doors open, but at that point, they're much more invested than I am. So they were able to give me some extra capital to actually finish, actually open the building. And it's actually kind of catching me back up. So when we got to this point, then, when I tried to get to the banking facility, we had already burned through anything actually that we had thought we were, or I was personally pretty much capped, but I didn't like not doing anything anymore. We were running under the gun on the banking facility being December thirty first. This is the original date that we had stated when we first started this, even before all the delays. That was when we were hoping to get the banking facility up and running. I took what I, I went back to Dave, I said, how can I get this done? This is what I can make it done. This is the but-for, this is how I'm trying to make it happen. If, if this is the only way this happens, if, if at this point, okay, we could wait three to five years and actually pull some of that out, and actually get to the point where I'm right side up, and I can be like, hey, let's go. What if we want it now, we want it under these conditions, this is what I gotta do. And I mean, I think it's still a great plan. I didn't ask for space, concentration, soccer teams, graduation parties, that is, I mean, I know there's a need for it, and I live here, it's, it's why, I mean, I need to have my individual coaching, I do a lot of sports things, and I'm here, and I mean, so, I mean, I guess that's sort of catching up to something, and if I might, I talk fast.
That was all news to me. So this was good. It was a good walkthrough, and, and I appreciate the explanation.
No problem.
How, how many full-time employees would you say you'll have when the banquet hall is open?
I'm at about eighty, well, at full-time equivalency, I'm at about forty-four, I think, forty-four to forty-eight, full-time equivalency, I have about eighty. A lot of them are part-time, and I have a lot of people that work somewhere else, you have server or in the kitchen. I'll probably add in another, well, it depends on, I guess, it depends on the community. But I will definitely be a management manager. Um, I will add another couple of folks to be able to handle it, I mean, probably even more, maybe ten more, part-time, maybe five, full-time equivalent.
And how many, um, not full-time equivalents, but how many full-time employees, how many forty-hour a week dedicated staff do you have?
Eighteen, twenty, full-time, just all full-time workers, yeah.
And, uh, a question for you, Mike.
Mm-hmm.
So, what I heard you say is that there is no money in TIF four.
Correct.
So we're gonna be, we're calling this a TIF four funding, but, um, the truth is, it's not gonna be coming out of TIF.
Right, because you gotta run it through the TIF.
Right, so we're gonna take a loan, we're gonna run it through TIF four.
Correct.
To give it to headquarters. So if Jamie pays the interest on the loan that we're going to have to take.
Mm-hmm.
Effectively, and I don't wanna oversimplify this, but effectively, are we basically partnering with Jamie to get him the capital that he needs to finish the project at no cost to the village, is that a fair thing to say?
Well, you're, because there's no increment in TIF four to, to pay the debt service until the, the projects generate enough increment, the village is fronting, the village's property taxpayers are fronting the, the loan, the debt service for the, for the project.
So, I'm, I wanna try to get to the point where I understand what the cost is going to be to the village to partner with Jamie on this.
It would, well, if you borrow sixty-eight thousand dollars over ten years, it's, it's about sixty-eight hundred dollars a year plus interest. And so, so in that ten-year period, maybe five years through that, Jeff, the, the project itself starts to generate enough increment to pay the debt service, but then it, then it's off, it's sort of off the village's levy then, the, the TIF itself is covering it. And actually, at some point, we may even pay the, the loan off early, it's possible. But for that initial period, when there's not enough increment being generated in a project, it's hitting the levy.
Does the, does the increment ultimately catch itself up and pay off the full amount of the TIF that was advanced on the front?
The vill- well, you could do that, yeah, you could, you could, you could pay the, yeah, you could pay the general fund back, or it could be the debt service back, if you wanted to do that.
Is that how it normally works, or is it normally that you kind of just, you kind of absorb that cost in the first five years, knowing that this is gonna be going on for the next hundred or however long headquarters is in business?
Yeah, I mean, right, I mean, the, the, the TIF force actually owes the village, the general fund, money, and we keep paying it back a little bit over a year, because we actually had to front that TIF to get created, you know, it takes some money to get created, so there's already a, a charge from the general fund to, to the TIF already, so I, I guess I'd have to, have to talk to Lisa about that, if she would think that we'd have to do that. So yeah, for that initial four to five-year period, should the village go back and, once there's, there, there's an extra increment, you pay yourself back, or you'll leave the increment in TIF four to do projects, that's, that's the other thought. I, well, as I say, I, I sometimes would lean just saying, because this TIF's limping along, I'd probably, if all of a sudden, the sixth year, we actually are generating an increment where we can actually, we can pay the debt service, we've paid ourselves back, I'd probably just leave the increment in the, in the TIF. That's just my, my gut reaction here.
This is, I had to, because to catch you up as well, when I bought that land, it was actually a negative quarter million dollars. It was losing the village about six grand a year, because you were, well, not just on my property, I don't know about the rest of it, but just on my property, you were negative six thousand, so since I've actually been there, and now you're positive, like, even what I am paying back, in the, if this takes four and a half years to pay back this, this whole thing, the whole loan, even though that's what I paid back, you've actually made almost extra thirty thousand, because you're not going negative anymore. So I mean, just, just on that, it's already, and, and that's not even included in any calculations, it's within ten words, it won't let you take the fact that I actually brought you from negative to positive, and put that into it, so, I mean, we've already started taking you from that, so we're actually, before I was there, there was nothing for me to any, any of this deposit on that.
And when does TIF four close?
Uh, I, I'd have to, that, that's TIF three. So I think, um, see, this, this, I'm trying, I think it was, I think TIF four was after TIF three, I think, so probably thirty, thirty-three, something like that. It has a way, ways of going, yeah.
And how far out does TIF four go, the district itself?
Oh, the district is, there's a map up there if you wanna, right next, on, on the bulletin board if you wanna.
I can check it later.
Oh, okay.
Is it just from, kind of from, uh, N M east?
It's from, um, east, it obviously includes, um, Jamie, includes the, goes down Park Street, where the, the potential hotel site, in, in, sort of in that redevelopment area, Jeff.
So just east of Jamie, pretty much?
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Mm. Thank you.
Yep.
Those are all my questions.
Anything else? Any other comments, Jamie, okay, we'll go to, uh, item four then. Uh, the village board may adjourn into closed session during the meeting pursuant to Wisconsin statute, section nineteen point eight five one E, to discuss the possible use of tax income financing to build a banquet hall, a headquarters restaurant, and TIF number four, speed of motion, second please.
Some.
Second.
Thank you, roll call please.
Grenier?
Yes.
Boudreaux?
Yes.
Brethor?
Yes.
Cool?
Yes.
Stephen?
Yes.
Carpenter?
Yes.
Follig?
Yes.
Okay, we'll go to closed session, we'll go across the hall.
Yep.
Good evening, everyone, we're back in open session, and I would ask Mr. Grace to make a report on our closed session.
So the board in, in, uh, closed session agreed to, uh, provide the sixty-eight thousand dollars in, in a TIF loan. Okay, I'm sorry, uh, provide the, the two-month ex- extension to build the banquet hall. Um, and, and in addition to paying interest, they, uh, they also wanted, basically, what we did with the grow more, uh, charge you four percent, if we, if we have to take a loan out, so sixty-eight thousand dollars, two-month extension and four percent interest on the loan.
Would that be based on my property, so I can, like Matt, he's finding out building the whole project? Um, there's a possibility, it's most likely having a next spring of Matt, uh, Scott building the, kind of whole project. Would that affect this, it wouldn't so waste even if that?
We, we borrow sixty-eight thousand dollars, and, and we're paying, we're, we're gonna charge you four percent for having to take that loan out.
Okay.
Nothing to do with pinnacle, nope.
So even if the, if I grow that property to fifteen times whatever?
We're still, we're, the village is still losing money by having to borrow the money and give it to you.
Even if?
Yep. Yep, yep, well, that's, the board should be answering, but I.
Yeah. No, you're fine.
Okay.
So now.
So, so, pardon?
Am I under the gun here, is this like?
No, no, so then, so then that, that's, if, if that's, you know, that's what the board's position is, if, if that's something you can live with, then, then Matt Dragon, the village attorney, has to draft an agreement. Right, the, but we don't have another meeting until July thirteenth unless, so.
Can, can Jamie go ahead with his project, I think is what he's asking?
That's, that's up to him.
That would be, yeah, so if I go back and talk to Dave, uh, just to, uh, and say, yeah, we're, we're good, this is acceptable, then even if, because it's not gonna be anything for a while anyway, it's okay.
Well, that's, again, that's up, that's up to you, the board, the board has taken a vote to, to, to give this to you, and so, you know, if you're comfortable doing it without a signed agreement from the village, that's, that's your decision.
And to maybe ease your mind a little bit, we had a discussion about, um, whether the board wanted to look at the, can I say this?
Like, yeah, I think we're okay, I think.
Let's put it this way, um, the, the, the meat of the deal is that we're gonna, we're gonna give you the TIF, the sixty-eight thousand, we're gonna give you the, a couple, a couple two, three-month extensions, um, that you requested to get the project done, because it's been a while before you've been able to get started, and instead of doing, uh, you pay us the interest for what we're borrowing, we're asking for four percent, period, just a flat four percent. Um, so if that's agreeable to you, we're not gonna go back on that.
Okay.
Um, and so, the only thing that Matt's document is going to do is reiterate that.
Right.
You know, in legalese, then with a bunch of flourishes, and, and a couple more pages. Yeah. But it's not gonna, it's not gonna deviate from this verbal agreement, so.
So Jamie, it's more of your level, level, if you're comfortable going ahead with all the signed agreements from the village, it's up to you?
No, I think that's, I guess I didn't know.
It's a handshake deal right now.
So what Jeff was saying is the big pieces are done, looks like you agree to that.
Yeah.
So, July thirteenth, there's not gonna be anything to pull the rug off from you.
Right.
So if you wanna get going, you can get going.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what it boils down to. Right, that's what we all agree to, right? Yeah, so, that's it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That, that works, okay? Okay. So we're done with that.
We are done with that.
Okay, uh, item six is approval minutes, uh, there are none. Item seven, approval of vouchers, uh, we have vouchers tonight, amount a hundred, ten thousand, four hundred and sixty-five dollars and twenty-two cents. More approval?
Second.
Any questions?
Jerry, we're ready for you.
No, you know, it's pretty straightforward this week, you know, we've, we've been, we've been meeting every week, so, you know, just not a whole lot here.
All right.
Small amount.
You should always be ready, though.
I know, we try to be.
Are there questions? Okay, so roll call please.
Boudreaux?
Yes.
Carpenter?
Yes.
Follig?
Yes.
Stephen?
Yes.
Redhauer?
Yes.
Cool?
Yes.
Grenier?
Yes.
Thank you. Item eight is community input, is there anyone who would like to address the board at this time? Okay. Item nine, proclamations and announcements, uh, A, board comments.
Don't forget the summer fest coming up, uh, the twenty-fifth to the twenty-eighth.
She just got signs all over town.
Yep.
Anything else, board? Uh, staff comments, Mike?
Just the, uh, meeting schedule, we sort of talked about it, that, um, the next board meeting would be July thirteenth, and I don't anticipate unless we had to, uh, having meetings on the twenty-second and twenty-ninth, sort of take a little summer break here, if it's okay with the board.
What am I gonna do with those two nights?
I know. Well, and, well, I'm sorry, actually, I should say, actually, we'd have, uh, also, we would not meet on July sixth, so. The only thing I need to check is whether or not we may, we may need to have a short meeting to approve some bills, so I'll have to talk to Beth about that, but, um. So, that's just good, so the next, the next meeting would be July thirteenth, unless something comes up.
July thirteenth?
July thirteenth, yes.
Have to get retrained.
Yeah, we'll forget how to meet by then.
Yeah.
It's a long way, so.
Unless, unless you wanna have meetings, I can find things.
That's all right.
Yeah, yeah.
We'll go on to item ten.
Okay.
Well, the next time we meet, it won't be like a six-hour job, will it?
Steve, I was wondering, um, if, could we go down to eleven B one?
Yeah, so which one do you do?
Yeah, kinda.
So, eleven B one.
Yeah, that's the, that's the planning commission.
Okay. So item eleven is reported committees, item B is a plant commission from June fourth, two thousand and fifteen, and it's trustee Carpenter, Jeannie?
Yeah. Okay, so this is a discussion and a possible action, or yes, right?
It, it's, you know, but it, it's really.
Oh, it's like, it's a discussion, right?
Yeah, the, the plant commission didn't really, um, make a motion, it was just more of a consensus that they feel comfortable with this, and I think the developer's asking for that, is the board comfortable with going to this type of plant development in this area?
Okay, so, um, there's a couple documents in your packet under eleven B, and the developer's here tonight. Um, we talked about this at the zone, the planning commission, um, the, the things that we liked about this development, where if you look at the map with all of the trees, um, one of the things that the planning commission did ask the developer was to save as many mature trees in this development as possible. So if you look in the map, the green dots are the trees that they're saving, and their red dots are the trees that are going, and they're at like, I think a seventy-two percent rate of saving the mature trees in the, in those lots. Um, other than that, we talked about, um, you'll see on that map, the different single-family, um, lots, and then you'll also see, adjacent to North Alpine Parkway, there are those, um, two big sort of rectangle lots, that those, um, would be for duplex condominium lots. Um, and that's one thing that we talked about that we, that we actually, that we liked. So I guess if you, um, have any questions, the developer's here tonight, if you want to.
And, and we, uh, we, we had a discussion, and Mark can kind of help me with this, we had a discussion about the road profile.
Oh, yeah.
At planning, and whether or not the developer should come and try to get a variance under the subdivision code chapter eighteen. We went through this with Mike's lab, and we all decided it made sense to do the plant development. The, the goal is to, um, as Jeannie's saying, save the trees, and, um, when they went, when the developer went many years ago now, to the regional plant commission, they had to, uh, do stormwater improvements and more infiltration, which is, this is why we're having swales in the area as part of the road profile versus storm sewer. It, I think this makes sense to do it this way, it's gonna be very nice, very nice subdivision.
Yeah.
And the, and the planning commission, we had, we had a quite a long discussion, if you look at the, the last document in this packet of the actual map of the, the roadway, of the sixty-six feet of the roadway, and then the swale, and there's a sidewalk on both sides. We did, um, request the developer to have sidewalks on both sides, we thought that was important, because that's a village policy, or maybe an unwritten policy, but a preference. Um, and we, we liked the look of this road as far as a, a more, um, I, I view it as a more modern, urban way to save trees and.
Question?
Yeah.
The one change, if I may, uh, Jeannie, is that the planning commission also asked the developer to have the two-foot of concrete, uh, shoulder on there in this plant issue.
Is, is this an opportunity, maybe, um, when we go back a couple of meetings, we were talking about having the village's ash trees inventoried? Uh, would this be an opportunity, maybe, to kind of direct the first, uh, audit of ash trees to this area, and have the developer just take those out, um, the, the mature ash trees that need to come out anyway?
I don't know if there's a lot of ash in there, there's a lot of hickory and boulder and maple in there, um.
They're, they're, they did a tree survey, tree survey back in oh-seven, oh-eight, I believe, and so, they're gonna have to take some trees out. I, I don't, I guess that's an interesting question, if they had choice between an ash tree and a, and a oak, would you take an ash tree out? I guess maybe, maybe you should dress up better than me.
Welcome.
Uh, I think the map we showed, red trees, determination, or, or they may by type, it's just made by the patients, and if they're in the way of the road, that they're coming out, and the trees that you see are, you know, on the lots that are red is opposite of the oak. We indicated a number that we thought was reasonable, given the sort of average, you know, higher-end home footprint, larger home footprint, as to what they were looking at, but the, um, plan is, uh, just that each lot be assigned a number, each home lot be assigned a number that they need to preserve, so they could, uh, take out a different configuration of trees than what we showed, as long as they preserve the total number, and if more are removed, then they have to be replaced. So, um, it, there, there's nothing in the plans currently that says what type we're going to have a preference for. So, I mean, in other words, I don't think there will be a choice from our standpoint, if the road goes there and the tree has to be removed, regardless of the type it's going to get removed.
So that brings up an interesting question in my mind, um, when we were talking with the, the arbor, the arborist.
Arborist?
The arborist?
Yeah.
I didn't really think about what we would do about privately owned ash trees, they're as dangerous to the, to the village's ash tree population as publicly owned ash trees.
What we're doing is only ash trees on village property, it's not on private property ultimately.
So then, would we look at this proposed development as private property, or would we look at it as public property at this juncture?
It's still private property.
It's private property, yeah.
Yeah, because right now they own it.
Yeah. The only thing that the arborist, or the agreement that the village made with the arborist is, as Steve said, it's what's in the street right away, or in the parks, basically, nothing to do with any private homeowners, ash trees at all. The homeowner is responsible for their own ash trees.
So the risk is to the homeowner, if their ash tree dies and it becomes a liability, they gotta figure out what to do about it, or it's gonna fall in their house.
Yeah.
And I don't have the tree survey with me, and I, and I can actually tell you if there even are any, I'm not sure, it's mostly, uh, uh, we do have a tree survey, but actually, I don't, this is not with me the first time.
That's okay, thank you.
Yeah, and that makes sense to be those varieties, because most of the ash trees are trees that were planted when the elms died, right?
Correct.
That's where a lot of them came from.
True, that's true.
And this is, this is a, more original woods, that. They're native to Wisconsin. Yeah. Yeah. As popular as apples or oaks. Yeah. So the question is.
Just.
Are we okay going with this?
Yeah, some, is there, the plant commission had thumbs up that this was a good, going to plant development made a lot of sense with the board, and I think the, we're just saying, for the developer's comfort level, the board's okay with it, they'll start going, have with the G D P and S I P and things like that.
I'll second.
Are we all okay with this?
It's a, coming as a motion.
There, there's no motion, it's just.
There's not a motion, it's just kind of a.
Consent.
S Y I.
Yep.
Not ahead, anybody have any problems with what is proposed here by the village office? Looks like you're all set.
Okay, thank you.
Should be a great development, we're looking forward to it.
So are we?
Good location. Don't let Nick mess it up, okay? How are you doing, Nick? We haven't seen you for a long time. Good, good. Yeah.
We're not used to having Nick so quiet. We're not used to you being so quiet.
Don't let him get a chainsaw.
See you guys.
Okay, so now we go back to ten A?
Yes.
You've been running me all over.
Well, so, so here's your choice, either make Dan or Kyle wait, who are you gonna make wait, so? Kyle, we're going to closed session at the end, so, if you go into closed session now, then Dan's gotta wait, so. I think we should probably keep it open session.
Okay. Okay, sorry, Kyle. This should go pretty fast. You're the only one.
That's your personal stake.
So is the meter running, or is it not running?
I'm pretty sure it's running.
Okay, so ten A, uh, discussion of possible action about hiring independent inspections to provide building inspection services, and appointing a company as the village's building inspector?
I'll make the motion.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Our, uh, building inspector resigned, and we're looking for replacement, and we're looking for this, coming to that, staff has checked things out, other.
I mean, there's ba- there's basically two companies, and, um, the, the, one other company really didn't respond to Mark's, um, request. And so Mark and I were talking about this morning, I think if the board agrees with this, our approach would be is that, um, we would, we would hire the service, and, and then I would, you know, when, when the new public works director is on board, I would tell him or her that at the beginning of next March, they would come here and talk to the board about this service, or not, we wanna keep, you know, keep this company, or go off for proposals, which direction we would go with bill inspections, because we have to give a, a sixty-day, um, notice you can terminate the agreement.
So any questions, comments?
I got a couple here. Um, my comment about additional inspections?
We do have that already in the fee schedule, I did look at that, uh, the next day.
Okay.
This, I think it was thirty-five dollars for inspection.
Okay, all right, so, and that, is that thirty-five dollars what this company's gonna charge, or is this company even more?
No.
It was the same?
They're going by our fee schedule.
Okay.
Yeah, they're gonna, yeah, I'm sorry, should know that they're gonna follow the fee schedule, yeah.
And are they gonna have hours? I know I read through this whole thing, and I was kind of, get a few questions, are they gonna have hours upstairs for contractors to come in and talk to them, or are they gonna be strictly called with somebody on a phone?
They'll be, well, they'll set, they can set something up here, but they'll be, they'll be up to the builder to schedule something.
Okay.
Schedule them upstairs.
Okay, so they won't be sitting upstairs?
We talked about that, and they, they didn't feel at this point it was necessary, but if it, if it has a move into this and get a good feel for it, that, that could possibly.
Okay, all right, and how much? Okay, all right. And how much, just quickly, I don't know if you can answer this question or not. Based on what we currently have versus going with this route. How much more is it gonna cost the village?
We, uh.
Is the village gonna save or is that a com- or a, a conversation we will have in a month or so after things get started?
I, I, when Lisa's back, I'm gonna ask her to do a little analysis, but we were, we actually were talking about a little bit last week and we think it, you know, when we come to the board and the, at budget time, we'll have a handle on what, what this is costing us versus what we would've had.
I know with benefits and all that kind of stuff, you can't answer it today, but I just am curious.
Right. Yeah, we'll, we'll be tracking that, absolutely.
All right.
And also too, I mean, just the level of service. Are people happy with the service? I will tell you that I, I asked a, a number of administrators about this a couple of weeks ago. When we got Mike's, um, uh, that, that he was resigning and, um, I mean, some, some, uh, communities have, uh, this company, some have, uh, uh, gen- general engineering. They're happy with both companies, so I.
All right.
So the phone connection will not delay issuing permits or review of permits?
Is, and I, I don't know all the rules here. When a contractor calls for an inspection, they're, what's it, twenty-four hours?
Uh, they actually got forty-eight hours.
Forty-eight hours. So this company can meet that requirement?
They have the inspector that they have, they've got inspectors and they coming.
Okay.
So I know that.
So is it gonna be the same inspector that handles typically us or will there be one or two? Cause I know we had information in there on a couple of people and their background and their qualifications, that kind of stuff.
We were told that it would be primarily one inspector. Of course, they're gonna back up if that person's on vacation or whatever, but one of the other good things about this, Mike and I talked about. Is if we start having problems with that inspector or the builders have.
That's right.
With that inspector, we can call a company, pick up phones, say, hey, we need a different inspector. This guy's not working out.
Okay.
Anything else? Okay, so we have motion second to hire independent inspections to provide our building inspection services and appointing them as a village's building inspector. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item B, discussion of possible action regarding approving an agreement with Epstein Uhan Architects. In about fifteen thousand nine hundred dollars for space needs analysis, uh, funding from TIF three and library impact fees.
Some move.
Second.
Any comments here from staff?
Yes, I wanted to make sure the board realizes that at this point, we're just talking about the, the space need study, not doing any building condition evaluation. You know, we'll even see if we end up doing that once the, the process is done.
Okay.
Okay. What's the balance in TIF three right now? Is there a fund balance in TIF three?
There is, but it's, there is, but you have to remember, there's money coming from TIF two to TIF three to pay debt service. So I mean, Lisa and I looked at this last week and if the budget came in exactly on budget, we actually would generate about seven thousand dollars surplus. In TIF three, but again, it's a little misleading because you're bringing in eighty thousand dollars from TIF two to pay debt service, so.
Right. Okay.
Thank you.
Yep.
So we're just looking at the fifteen thousand nine hundred dollars?
Yep, at this point, yes.
Can you take further? So, motion second to approve the agreement with Epstein Uhan Architects. In about fifteen thousand nine hundred dollars for space needs analysis, funding from TIF three and library impact fees. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item C, discussion of possible action regarding Van De Waal Civic Campus Plan Proposal. Uh, that was at our place when we came tonight, so.
Some move.
Second.
Any questions, discussion?
Along the lines of, of this campus master plan proposal, uh, have you had any further discussion about potential uses for this building? Do you have any information on that?
Um, we, I haven't gotten around to doing that. We're having, we're having another meeting. We were, we were looking at some other properties, so, but I, I know I have it on my list to do. I, can I just make a comment about this?
Certainly.
So, um. The, the space needs study, we sorta had in the budget because we were calling it the civic campus plan that's, that's in TIF three, so some of that was budgeted. So, so this is truly not budgeted at all, this, this part, this part of the project. So when I, when I received this, I ended up drafting an email back to Mike Slavine. I said, well, Mike, what would happen if we did, um, tasks? One, two, and three this year, which adds up to tw- twenty-three thousand three hundred thirty-five dollars. And then did the, the last te- couple tasks next year, which add up to twenty-five thousand three forty and split the cost because, you know, we just don't have this type of money sitting around. Um, some of this, we could charge to TIF three. Again, there's a question Jerry asked me about how much money is in there. But some of this, we're gonna have to, uh, um, pay a little bit of the general fund for this. And I think we could probably use some, uh, library impact fees. And, and I think we'll, we'll find a comfortable level on that. But I really think it'd be very hard for the village to, to, to spend almost fifty thousand dollars of unbudgeted money. I, I just.
Well, this time of year especially, cause we don't know the second half of the year.
Yeah, so, so if the board, if the, the motion passes, that I, I would ask that we, we split up and, and, and Mike said that was fine. The process could work.
Yeah.
I think that, um, by my motion, basically gives you the latitude to make those kinds of decisions.
I, I just wanted the board to know that, cause I know when Mike was here, he was talking about finishing everything by the end of the year and, and I was sort of nervous about what this was, was gonna cost, so.
I gulped myself on this.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So I think, I think trying to, I think actually Jeff, with that flexibility, then I think I'm, I'm gonna do it based on what, where the funding's available.
Yeah.
And I'll keep the board posted on that.
Motion to that effect?
If, if I'm, if Peggy includes in the minutes, I'm comfortable with it, Jerry. Thank you.
So basically, we approved the motion to approve this and we're saying that staff will direct the process timing wise and so on going forward, right? Okay, everybody? Yeah.
Okay.
That makes sense. Cause they'll make it work financially, so.
Let it not go beyond two thousand sixteen though.
Yeah, no, we'll finish it next year and a, year and a half. Yep, yep.
Now, we're making investments in, in this project and I think we've already had the discussion about whether or not the project needs to be done. Now it's just a matter of doing all the groundwork necessary to understand the scope of the project and the implementation and what phases are what. And I do think that, um, we need to start engaging the community, uh, in this conversation and I talked, uh. Doug was nice enough to set up a, a visit for us down at the Goodman Center. And it was a great tour, uh, of the facility. I'd never been there before, but we had Allison there from the senior center. Who was it we had there from the youth center?
Chris Halverson.
Chris Halverson from the youth center was there. We had, uh, Julie and Linda Fuller from the Oregon Food Pantry there. So stakeholders, uh, and I kinda challenged, I challenged them and I said, you need to get your centers of influence now rallied. And I, the library, I wish would've been there, but I, I would say the same thing to the library, you know, get your directors rallied around this and, and start to educate your constituents. About the need for this, um, cause I don't think it should all fall to the village.
Yeah.
Um, and matter of fact, if this, if this was just simply an idea that the, for seven of us had, that would be a bad idea by definition, right? We're talking about the whole village here. So, um, so I think that we should continue to talk about this.
Yeah. In, in task one, the third item on that list there, open house, so right off the bat, Mike wants to hold an open house listening session, which is a good idea. And I, and Doug, you make a really good point that, um, this should be done in twenty sixteen because you, you, you can't drag this out. You'll lose, you'll lose people along the way, so.
Things change too much.
Yeah, so we'll, we'll get it done next year.
You gotta build momentum and.
And then you gotta finish the plan, yep.
Get the support.
Mm-hmm.
Yep.
Good. Any further questions?
So maybe we could make this, uh, can we make this a standing agenda item in terms of progress?
I, I made a note of that, yep.
Anything else? So we have a motion second to approve Van De Waal Civic Campus Plan Proposal. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Item D is a thank you to Gary and Donna Dish for planting and maintaining flowers in downtown area. They've done that since that started, right, Mark?
Right.
And, and they planted a lot of time. I've seen them working downtown.
Really looks nice.
Other folks have helped them too.
Very nice.
And, um, we're very appreciative of what that's done.
We're, we're gonna get him my gift certificate.
We've done gift certificates for changing restaurants in Oregon over time, so, so, um, so a thank you from us.
Yeah, Mason's gift certificates don't go very far.
Item E, discussion of draft memorandum of understanding regarding jurisdictional transfer of county highways to the village and the board providing direction to staff.
So this is the, um, the draft in response to my email that we sent to the county. And, and then there was a, an, another email that came this, this afternoon from the county's corporate council office. And, um, so I, I think she made, she made some good changes to the agreement based on my, um, my, or I, our email. Uh, the, the three things that, um, are not addressed or maybe need to be addressed in the draft MOU. Is this whole idea that, um, I think, you know, we told them that the village would wanna take all the roads over. Once all the roads were fixed up versus doing it on an individual, on an individual road basis. That's the first question. Um, Jerry wanted the Fish Hatchery paving in there and if you, and if you read her email, she is not, is not in the MOU. And then she does not include anything about the levy adjustment and that's what this most recent email discussed. So I ta- we talked to Matt about this last week. Matt, uh, had an attorney with his firm, Connie Anderson. Who, uh, defended the Cities and Village Association last year, a year and a half ago, um, over a, a levy. I'm not gonna, it's a long story, I'm not gonna get, but basically that we won in front of administrative judge, the county had to do a, a levy adjustment for a transfer of service. So, um, I emailed Tony Roach, city administrator, about when they took over PD, that they asked for a levy adjustment and he said they did not. So, so the reason I'm bringing all this up is that I think if we really wanted to pursue the levy adjustment, we're, we're gonna be on our own doing that. I don't think any other community's done that. So I think what we determined as well as Matt is that we probably should think about pulling it out of this agreement if, if that's what the board decides. And sort of argue about that on, on the side. And, and possibly through the Cities and Villas Association versus just doing it ourselves.
So keep the project going forward.
Well, that's, that's a board decision. It's a board decision. So if you do that, then you've got this issue about, do we wanna take a road over? Like when, when they fixed Jefferson Street in twenty sixteen, we take that over when they fix this street, you know, versus saying, no, we want to take, you fix all the streets in the next four years and then we, we take them over. And then, and then Jerry's playing about, um, moving up the paving at Fish Hatchery, the ideas of the, that the bike trails out, you know, out to Fish Hatchery and make it safer to ride.
I've got some more thoughts about that too. I went out there over the weekend and I, you know, the bike trail is punched through now. You can see exactly where it is. And, uh, if you look at the shoulders on Fish Hatchery, along that area, they're, they, they don't exist. It's, you know, we, I wonder about village liability. Because that goes out, you know, get a nice new bike path, gonna go out to Fish Hatchery Road, dumping people on a very unsafe road. If the county wants to have an unsafe road, that, that should be their liability. So I think in the very, the very minimum, I think we should ask for a release of liability, accident liability.
Did, did you talk to Josh about this, Jerry?
I have a meeting with him on Friday.
Okay.
So, um, and I'll bring it up, but I, I think as part of this agreement, we ask for a release of liability. I don't know how the rest of the board feels, but I, you know, if somebody gets hurt or God forbid severely injured or worse. I, I know if it was my family, I would sue everybody I could, the county, the village. Especially when there's a nice new bike path coming out through the bad stretch of road. Those are my thoughts. They don't wanna do the road, move it up a year, I'll find. I don't know that we wanna take the energy to fight that fight. I'll, I'll do my best on Friday.
Yep.
Again, I think, uh, if there's, if they're okay with having that unsafe stretch of road, then they should be okay with giving us a release of liability.
That should be interesting, Jerry.
So talk, talk with you, I shouldn't, yeah, that'll be a nice discussion.
Yeah.
Um, so then what about the, uh, the phasing? Is, does the board, um, care about just taking each road over once it's, it's up the, up the speed or just?
Does it require a lot of paperwork or documentation? What sort of obstacles would there be?
It would just be in this agreement that we don't take all the roads over until all, all the county highways are up, up to, uh, standard. Or what's being proposed is that we take each road over once it's, it's, it's reconstructed or repaved or whatever you wanna call it.
Is Mark gonna stay until that gets all done?
Yes. That's, that's how we're gonna keep him here, Jerry.
I'd like to hear. Um, how do you feel about that, Mark? All at once or one at a time?
Well, we talked about doing it all at once and one of the reasons for that was so that they gave us time to, um. Get staff and equipment to take over these, these roads. Because we're, we're short now and we're gonna really be short when it comes to maintenance of snow removal, um, as far as, because they're gonna become a priority road. So we're gonna have to do those first and, uh, colls acts and it ends, of course, they're gonna get slipped down the list and with priority timelines.
Eric's gonna have to move.
That was, that was one of the reasons for doing it all at once.
How would you feel about, um?
Can I just, can I just, so when we brought this up, Jerry, as we've interrupted you, but they sent me a series of agreements from other communities. This is how they do it. Once they do the road, they give it to the community. So again, we're gonna be fighting upstream on this.
That's why they wanna do it, is to get rid of the road.
No, but I, I, they, you're only getting part of the picture. I know for a fact that they're still doing, letting the snow removal on PD either.
Oh, that's true. That's true.
After.
That is true.
After PD was turned over.
That is true. That's, that's being delayed. That's right.
So I, I, there, there are other ways to do this.
Okay, that's a good point. You're right. I forgot about that.
If you're thinking about, you know, there shouldn't be too much maintenance initially.
I'm sorry.
So if we negotiate having them continue to do the s- snow removal.
That's not a bad compromise. Yeah.
Trunk's are done, uh, then Mark's plan about, you know, getting ready for the additional labor and equipment would play out to that.
Plus their trucks go down those roads anyhow, right? When they plow, even though they, they become ours. But they'll go through town to get the other county roads out of the cars.
Absolutely.
Yeah, so just put it plowed out. Well.
You laugh, but that's where they take their breaks. They take their breaks there.
Everyone needs coffee.
Trey, that's not a bad way. That's an interesting, because, yeah, once, I mean, once the road is fixed, how many years ago before you do crack filling, right?
So all you got, all, all.
Yeah, so you're, you're talking about, you're really talking about snow.
Snow removal, yeah.
That's all, that's all they're doing on PD.
Well, that's not a bad, okay.
It's a new road. Shouldn't need much other maintenance.
Yeah.
If they do it right. But Mark's gonna be around to make sure of that. So, Mark.
Picking on Mark. So the, is that, is that a good compromise for the board to give, say that, well, basically follow what, what Pittsburgh did with PD, which is that. You can, we'll take the road over, but you're gonna snow plow.
Yeah.
Okay.
That gives us time to get the equipment and more personnel.
That's a really, that's a really excellent idea. Yeah, okay.
I hear, I hear, I hear things.
Any, anything else on?
Well, I'm, I'm sorry. I gotta, and then I guess what, what is the board's feeling about the levy adjustment? Do you wanna just leave it out of the agreement and we'll fight that battle whenever?
Yeah.
Mary's letter was pretty clear. If you wanna fight it, the whole thing comes apart.
Yeah.
Was the gist of her letter.
You know, I, yeah, I don't know why they had, why she had a.
She's just the attorney.
It, it would actually be interesting to, to, we had, if we're trying to, to like, actually go through that, but Matt did not know off top of his head where or not we would win.
Yeah, we've been saying Matt, right?
Well, that's right versus the, let the association, if we ever let the association do it, because then the association's paying the attorney.
What about the release of liability?
I, I, I'll, I'll put that in there. But I'm talking, we're, we're gonna talk about the, uh, the snow plowing and, and release of liability, right?
And don't let them tell you that it's never been done before, the snow.
No, I actually remember that now. It's, I've, I've got the Pittsburgh agreement, Jerry. That was good.
So anything else on ten E?
But I'm gonna, I'm just gonna wait. Jerry, I'm gonna wait for you to meet with Josh on Friday before I say anything.
That's fine. I'll call you.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
So item F, launching a village's Facebook page?
Just wanted to tell you that Candy, we did that, um, I think it was last week and, uh, we're already using it. She did a great job getting this up and running.
Yeah, give her her thanks, please.
I would do that.
Item G, discussion of road maintenance work schedule? Mark? Um, Candy put this map together for you. I think it's all of you on the website. I think she may, we're gonna be distributing it. Talks about the three projects, the mills and overlays, um, another wood project, watering project, market street and, uh, Jamesville Street. Those timelines, when the work is gonna be done, I think it's gonna be helpful.
And we'll do one more, which is when we, when we're gonna do the, uh, Bron Road, uh, crossing.
Yeah.
We can do another one.
Okay. Any questions?
Oh, I, so I believe there's an error on the map, just FYI. The first page of the map, of course, ten G is. Is that another which street?
First page of the map, of course, 10G is, is that Another Wood Street in the very bottom of the, of the map? Seems to be.
No, you're right. That's, that's actually, uh, oh, wait. Where can that change, thank you, Jeff.
Is it your questions?
No, I have one quick.
Oh.
Would I be allowed to go back for a comment on, on E or C?
Sure.
Um, okay, I'm so sorry to interrupt, just one second. Um, I didn't know you that, um, Jeff, that you all were going to Goodman. I am, I didn't know, so if I had known, I would have gone, um, but, um, I think that it is a very interesting center. I think they have a lot of smaller rooms. I've been there several times, um, but if you're gonna go see somewhere else, again, I would love to go. If you'd just include me, that would be great.
I apologize for the oversight.
Okay, but, you know, I would, I'd love to go if you let me know, thank you.
And I wasn't trying to throw you under the bus.
Well, I felt like I had a few tread marks by it, I just wanted to make sure. Okay.
It's, it's a group, it's a group effort and, and I just want to make sure you're included, so I'm glad that you, you brought that up.
Okay, thank you so much.
Yeah.
Okay.
Doug's taking responsibility for that.
No, it's just, I have a different email too, so maybe I didn't know if that was part of the problem, so. Thank you.
Thanks, Susan. Okay, item 11, reported committees, we have the Park Board, June 3rd, 2015, trustee Brethauer.
The Park Board recommended approval of hiring JST Professional Services to put together a master plan for the Keller Alpine Meadows Park. The packet itself is in the packet, tonight's packet. And the summary of their proposed process can be found toward the back part of the proposal. And includes, I think, many of the planning elements we'd want to see and that is involving public input in several, in several points during the whole process.
Okay, so that comes as a motion, we need a second, please?
A second.
Thank you. Are there any questions?
Just a reminder to the board that the school district is, uh, sharing these clauses.
Is that total 12,000 or is that our portion of?
That's total.
Okay, so we're half that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Anything else? So we have motion second to approve hiring JST Professional Services for planning for Keller Alpine Meadows Park. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, item B, we've done. Item 12, Minnesota requiring action, uh, from the Oregon Area Fire EMS District, April 9th, 2015. Those are in the packet, if people wish to see that. Item 13 is unfinished business, there is none. Item 14, new business. A, approval of pending new operator license, these are approved by the Police Department for Alpine Liquors, Teresa Tobias. Can we do all these at once? Doesn't sound like it.
Oh, you know what, no, I'm sorry, you need, you gotta do the one that says pending and then one read. You gotta, you gotta submit a motion, please.
So we need a motion second for 14A?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, item B, approval of renewal operator licenses. Again, these are approved by the Police Department for Oregon Bowl, Karen Denny and Thomas Porter. Equip tip number 372, Stephen Ostry, Melissa Rice, and Michelle Finstead.
So moved.
You got Bill's Food Center in there as well.
Oh, I didn't turn the page, thank you. Bill's Food Center, Brian White Stout and Travis Moley, so we'll, 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 so we have a motion, we have a second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item C, approval of renewal operator licenses. Now, these are pending, approved by the Police Department for Oregon Bowl, Cory Hendrickson and Lori Johnson. For J L Richards, Loretta Evert and Melody Evert. And for headquarters, Justin Hale and Kyle Flanagan.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. There are three future agenda items listed, which the public can find online if they wish to see those. Item 16, the village board may adjourn into closed session during the meeting pursuant to Wisconsin statute, section 19.851C. To discuss performance evaluation data regarding village employee, the board will adjourn from closed session.
I'll make the motion. Second.
Thank you, roll call, please.
Carpenter?
Yes.
Staton?
Yes.
Follig?
Yes.
Brethauer?
Yes.
Cool?
Yes.
Grenier?
Yes.
Boudreaux?
Yes.
Thank you, we're going to closed session, unup to my.
Hi, everybody, how you doing? You having a good time tonight? We are so appreciative for you coming out to our last concert. Believe it or not, this is the choir's last concert, where we open it up to everybody in the school to show off their talents, and I think you've seen some pretty amazing stuff so far. Why don't you give up a round of applause for all of you? Um, every year, this concert is a big deal for the seniors especially. This is their last performance in front of friends and family, and hopefully not their last forever. I might hope that they go on to college and, and sing in some capacity, or when they graduate, they sing church choir, community choir, something, just to keep music.
Yes, he's coming. He's running time.
Good evening, everyone. It is Monday, July 13th, 2015 at 5:00 PM. This is a meeting of the Oregon Village Board, which I'd like to call to order and request roll call, please.
Cool.
Here.
Brethauer?
Here.
Grenier?
Here.
Staton?
Here.
Carpenter?
Here.
Falek?
Here.
Udrow?
Thank you. So can we start with 3A? We don't have to wait for the man to get to it.
Um, why don't we see, we'll just do a few misleading things.
We'll go on to 5 and 6.
Yeah, let's do that, then we can bounce back.
So we are waiting for item 3, our village attorney, who is on the way but caught in traffic, so we'll go to item number 5, approval of minutes. Uh, we have minutes from April 22nd, 2013, special meeting, and November 4th, 2013. So we need a most and a second for both of those together, please.
Move to approve.
Second.
Thank you. Are there any additions or corrections? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, thank you. Item 6 is approval of vouchers. Now, we have vouchers tonight, amount of 1 million, eighty-nine thousand dolla, eighty-nine thousand five hundred and seventy-four dollars and thirty-seven cents.
Second.
Thank you. Questions?
Um, the, the, two solar speed signs, are those, I saw the one out on, on CC, and the other one, is that on, is that on South, or on Janesville Street?
Correct. Uh, yeah, 138 coming into town.
Okay, I just haven't noticed that one.
Right, just, right before Park Street.
Okay, I, uh, I came, today I went out and saw the one at, uh, on, uh, CC. It's the same thing as on North Main. You really, your cars just, they're just slow right down when you see that, so, those really are worth the money, I think.
Yeah, I agree, Jerry.
Yeah, that's the only question I have.
Eric said you probably missed the one, because you're going too fast, but we won't pass judgment on that right now.
Eric knows me.
He didn't say that, I made that up.
I can't, I can't see it.
Other questions on the vouchers? So we have a most and a second for vouchers in the general operating fund, an amount of 1 million, eighty-nine thousand five hundred and seventy-four dollars and thirty-seven cents. Roll call, please.
Grenier?
Yes.
Cool?
Yes.
Staton?
Yes.
Falek?
Yes.
Carpenter?
Yes.
Brethauer?
Yes.
Thank you. Item 7 is community input. Uh, the board has established a time for public to address us, if anyone wishes to do so, now is the time. I know some are up later, come on up, Judy. Welcome.
I just wanted to thank everybody for, um, helping with the Summer Fest, all the volunteers, all the sponsors, everybody that made it happen, and we had these wonderful village board members that helped volunteer, as well as some people from the village, um, office itself. So I want to say thank you, thank you. It turned out to be pretty nice, ended up being, the police department was there to walk through once in a while, so I got to talk with Jenny, which I never get to do, so it was really a nice thing, and I would like to make sure that, keep in the back of your mind, it might be really nice to have the Oregon Police Department help us out again, so I'm just bringing it up as an idea, so I'm hoping you think it over, and, um, it would be, I did have Jeannie as my right-hand lady all weekend, so it, these are gonna kill me, it's gonna help me, so, um, but it really is a nice, a nice thing for people to see what really goes on, and what goes on in, inside the, um, planning and everything like that, so, and also, these wonderful people at OCA, um, we had a little bit of, uh, glitch for, um, the speaker system for the parade, and let me tell you, those guys got it done in ten minutes, and we're back on track, so it all went wonderful, so thank you, thank you, everybody that helped.
Well, thanks, we appreciate that, and I think on behalf of the board, express everybody, we really appreciate the job you do in organizing that.
Thank you.
The time you put in. The comment I heard a lot from people is you've really made it family-friendly, and I think that's real important with the community celebrations, so a big thank, it's thanks to you for doing that.
Thank you, and that's what we want to do, is make it family-friendly.
Yeah.
So we're not there to have, make it a, a huge drunk-out or anything like that, but we do, um, that's what makes us our money, is some of the beer, so.
Yeah.
Uh, we do like to have that, too.
Sure.
But nobody, we had no incidents whatsoever, so it really worked out very nicely.
Yeah, we appreciate your leadership.
Thank you.
Are you ready, Mr. Dregney?
Yes.
Okay, we'll go up to, back up to number 3, village attorney report, item 8, discussion of possible ash, my supplemental agreement to undertake development in Village of Oregon Tax increment district number 4, with JAD Partnership LLC.
So you should have in your packet, item 3A, uh, the agreement that has been prepared, uh, at the direction of the village board to provide additional TIF support for headquarters, the bank facility in particular. Um, we did provide a draft to Jamie Bush, and he had a question that he raised about the letter of credit, um, that, a provision I have in here, I'm basically saying that we're, we're holding an existing letter of credit that secures, uh, his obligations under the existing agreements, that, that letter of credit expires at the end of this year.
Correct.
And because we're giving him more time, and because we now have a new agreement, I've, I've let him know that they need either to provide a new letter of credit that will carry through the term of this agreement, and that applies to this agreement, or they need to amend the terms of the existing letter of credit. Um, we hadn't heard back from him as of today, as to whether, his question was, do I need a new letter of credit, or can, can we just amend the, the existing? I said, either way is fine. So maybe that's okay with him, I don't know, uh, but this is the agreement, I guess if, uh, my suggestion is that if the terms are acceptable to the board, you approve it, and if he's got a problem, he'll let us know.
Yeah. I mean, I, we've done before, we've had a contingent on the village attorney approving the letter of credit format, so that'd be my recommendation.
Okay.
I, I think the agreement covers everything the board wanted to see in the, in our office of Jamie.
Okay. So we'd need a motion to accept that, given the status of the letter of credit?
I'll make that motion, and again, it should be contingent upon, uh, the attorney receiving the, a new letter of credit, or an amended letter of credit, and approving that, and.
Excuse me, do I have a second?
A second.
Thank you. Okay, Jerry.
I'll, I'll just want to bring up one other point related to TIFs in general, not necessarily this one, but there's a lot of misunderstanding about TIF, and, uh, this is not free money, this is not a giveaway, it's a loan, and, uh, in this case, it's, uh, interest-bearing at 4%, so the taxpayers are gonna recoup 4% over the life of this. So I, uh, I just wanted to state that.
Yeah, thank you.
And Jerry, not, not to be technical, this, this is actually a grant.
Okay.
So I'm not, you know, I know somebody asked me that before, and I said, it's a little different than, you can do a, a loan, but this is actually a grant, because the village is providing the money, and then we're, we're getting paid back to the increment by the new development, so.
Thanks for correcting my.
Yeah, so the purpose is to provide, uh, financial help in an area where development might not happen, and that is paid back, and plus some by the time it's done. Uh, so at the end of the, the time period that's set up, um, we have some more development there, and, uh, it's beneficial to that area, so taxpayers are not losing money. Oftentimes, they think it's like a, just a cash handout, so, coming from what happened in Madison with the Edgewooder, I think, Mr. Dregney was up a lot. So any questions, comments, anything from Matt? Okay, so we have a motion and a second to approve the supplemental agreement to undertake development in Villa, Village of Oregon Tax increment district number 4, with JAD Partnership LLC. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, thank you. Item B, uh, the update on the hearing, we will not be, we're not able to update anything, uh, at the present time tonight, we'll go on to.
Well, see, I, I do want to, I mean, at this point, there is a, a hearing scheduled on July 22nd, but other than that, I just want to make sure the board knew, and the residents knew that, so, yep.
Okay, thanks. Uh, item 4, public appearance, um, open to public hearing with Ben Cowan, agent for Oregon Ice Arena Incorporated, uh, who has filed an application for a Class B permanent mall beverage license with the village clerk in the Village of Oregon, for the property at 100 North Prairie Parkway, which is Oregon Ice Arena. Notice was given pursuant to section 125.043G and village ordinance 13-05, and the responsible board to action on this, so Ben, welcome.
Thank you.
So you can go ahead and explain what you've got planned?
Oh.
And we'll ask some questions.
So this, we have an opportunity, um, there's a, a junior team coming in called the Wisconsin Whalers, and they've been playing at Hartmire for the last couple of years, which Hartmire's a ice rink on the east side of Madison. Um, this junior team brings, I mean, so much stuff to, not only the rink, but really the community. You know, for the rink, it's an extra $20,000 right up front, that's just an ice usage fees. Um, concessions with their home games, you know, we're looking between probably fifteen and twenty thousand dollars, extra revenue, they're right there in concessions. Uh, they have 22 home games, um, the ownership group of the Whalers is, they're all business guys out of Dubuque, um, really stand-up guys, and they want to do the right thing. Um, more benefits for, you know, the Oregon youth hockey is the Whalers, you know, by having those guys around all the time, they're gonna inspire, you know, the kids, and, and why not to continue to play hockey, you know, past high school, um, and then be at all the practices, and it's just, it's a really good thing. So with the home games, you know, trying to treat like the Mallards, um, years ago we had the Outlaws, which that was adults, and that was, you know, WJJO, their, their deal. Um, you know, Whalers, family-friendly, you know, it's just about entertainment value, you know, bringing more entertainment value into the community itself, um, and I just, I think it's a positive thing, and I think moving forward, you know, if we have the license, you know, then we can do other stuff, we can have other community events there, like I know the Oregon Straw Hat Players are gonna utilize our, our lobby here in, uh, first part of August, you know, for event they're having, so it just opens us up to more revenue possibility, um, by having this, because then more events can come in. That's really, in a nutshell.
Okay. So, questions?
Uh, Ben, how many games did you say I might have missed that?
Twenty, 22 home games.
Twenty-two.
Plus playoffs.
Very good.
Yeah, so this'll be exciting.
And I assume most of them are on weekends?
Fridays and Saturdays.
Okay.
Yeah, I think there's, there's one Wednesday night, the Wednesday before Thanksgiving, um, and then like two Sunday games.
Okay, and then, so who, who'll be doing the security for that?
Uh, we've just, we've used JBM.
JBM?
Yeah, that's what we use for the alumni attorney.
Okay, so it'll be the same.
Yep, until Judy gets what she wants passed, and then we'll use the.
What does she want?
I don't know, something about the Oregon Police Department, I, I don't know.
Oh, okay, got it.
That's a future agenda.
Feel free to pick on her anytime you want.
I, I try.
Yeah, um, well, good, that's good news, and, uh, I'm pleased to hear that, that, uh, it's gonna help you be more successful than you already are.
Mm-hmm, yeah, I think it'd be, it's gonna be a great thing, yeah, um, and just some advertising things, 'cause I know, like, like, uh, perception kind of is reality, and I've, like, I've worked hard on myself over the last six years to really build my character, um, and really, I, I've learned that, like, the Outlaws, we, you know, we advertise on WJJO, like, it was about, you know, partying and drinking, and, you know, just kind of balls to the wall, sparring, excuse the language, but, you know, this is, like, we're doing Magic 98, so it's, you know, family, the kids, bringing the bounce houses, setting up an entire arcade, you know, in the lobby, which is coming this week. Um, it's just, the overall experience is just, it's, it's so much different than that, and even that, like, we never had any issues, um, we always had the proper security, the whole deal, so I, I think that we've kind of proven ourselves over the last, you know, six years that, you know, we can handle it, and we're ready to move on.
Uh, Ben, what kind of attendance have the Whalers been experiencing?
Not good, yeah, at Hartmire, they'd average, you know, 100, 150 people.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, I mean, I foresee, so the last, the last couple of games of the Outlaws, with really no marketing budget at all, and we saw four, 500 people, so I'm thinking that the Whalers, we can get, you know, the three to 500 people kind of mid, midway through the season.
That'd be great.
Well, which brings a lot of money here.
Yeah, yeah, well, a lot of money for the, uh, the hockey rink, too, concessions and, and beverage sales, so.
Yeah, it's, it's kind of a game changer for us.
Yeah, I would say, well, good luck.
Other questions?
Is that, so you say it's a junior league, does that, is it still adults playing, or is it younger?
It's post, it's typically post-high school, so the way hockey's structured is, you play high school hockey, and then, like, most of the Division 1 athletes are 20, 21-year-old freshmen in hockey, so they go from high school to then go play juniors, which juniors like USHL, which is the Madison Capitals, they play at the Coliseum, they're tier 1, then there's a team at Janesville that's tier 2, and then the Whalers are actually a tier 3 team.
Okay. So you don't foresee a problem serving alcohol when your hockey players are gonna be under 21?
No, they'll be on the ice.
Okay.
Yeah, they're not a part of the, they're just, they're there to play, and this is about the fan experience.
Okay. I have a question for Chief Burke, um, are, is the Oregon Police Department, or is it gonna be a routine procedure for, for a member of the staff to check in and just monitor, um, conditions and alcohol sales once in a while? Or is that?
Well, that's a good question, I, we, you know, we don't currently do that for other establishments, I guess it would depend upon, um, you know, the size of the, of the crowds, and, and how frequent, um, you know, the, the quote-unquote "events" were happening.
Okay.
Um, it's, you know, it's certainly something we, we, we could do as, as, um, time allows, and, and whether people are busy or not, but, um, I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't want anybody to count on it, per se.
Let me rephrase that, would it be similar to what you do with the other establishments and on that serve alcohol, you do, you do a walkthrough once in a while, or, or?
Again, it, it, it depends, um, and, you know, it depends on the, the, the size of the crowd, and, and whether, um, we're, you know, whether we're trying to prevent things from, from occurring, if, if, um, you know, if officers start to see things that, um, behavior that may be escalating, um, or, or they're starting to see people, you know, wandering outside an establishment with alcohol in their hands, stuff like that, then, you know, it's a good thing to go in and, hey, you know, remind, remind people, hey, you can't be outside, you can't be doing this, you can't be doing that, so there, there's, there can be a PR component, uh, to that kind of thing, but like I say, as, as a matter of practice, um, that, that's not going to, not going to happen. I, I would, I would expect that, um, you know, in some of the situations that, that Ben's referring to, um, you know, our, certainly our hope would be that there would be some, um, onsite security to help, you know, kind of manage that stuff, and in those cases, um, you know, it's kind of no different than, than Summer Fest, um, you know, Judy, Judy had her, uh, private security people there, and we periodically check in with them, uh, again, just to, you know, ask them if anything's going on that we need to be aware of, uh, to make sure that they understand that they're gonna be supported, um, if, if something, um, starts to go awry, that they know who they can, uh, call and count on for help, so, um, that, that certainly would take place.
Okay, would it be helpful if, if Ben supplied, uh, your department with a, a schedule, so you know that there's an event occurring?
Oh, certainly, certainly, especially any, any time, um, you know, certainly when we get up into, you know, when we're talking about 100 people or, or more, um, and, and if there's alcohol that's going to be served, that would be something that, you know, it would be, it'd be wise for us to be aware of.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah, they, they stopped down to the, they popped into the alumni attorney, say aye.
So if I just stand it right, alcohol would be sold in kind of the lobby area, is that correct, toward the front of the building?
Yeah.
And then you would, people, customers could then take their beer into the stands?
In the stands, yeah, so we'd, we'd set up, we'd set up the bar, just like we did for all the other events, so the bar itself is actually in the arena, and then the lobby, because we, we won't sell, we won't sell beer out of the concession stand itself, it'll be a separate area.
So Ben, uh, the rink had a license before, as you know.
Yep.
And all of us do also, and, um, they had, it might have been for the alumni attorney, I'm not sure, but, uh, what it was for doesn't make a lot of difference, but they, they set up, uh, a ticket, was saying, oh, you can eat and drink.
Mm-hmm, that was me.
I think, I think the management, you knew that?
Yeah, that was me.
Okay, so you should have known full well that was not acceptable, with what this board is down with liquor license stuff, so how are we gonna keep that from happening again?
Or just not gonna do it.
Okay, so we could attach that right to license, right?
Uh, the board has the authority to attach conditions to the issuance of a new license.
And you have to when the license is new, otherwise it becomes very difficult.
Correct.
Okay.
It's not possible to do it unilaterally at the time of renewal, it's only possible for the board to set those conditions on its own, at the time you issue a new license, which is where you are here, as I understand it.
Yeah, and also, when the new leadership took over at the rink, um, yeah, we met with them, and they said they were not going to apply for another license, because, uh, there was no revenue stream that showed at all, with all they'd done, that it was basically, um, they didn't save lost money, but at best it was break even, and, um, you know, I guess I would have trouble granting a license under that circumstance.
Um, I don't, I, I know they made money in the past because of it, and I think the reason that they weren't gonna apply for a license is they had no reason to, so without, without something to do, without a fan experience, you know, then it's, it's just a hockey rink.
Okay, yeah, and that, that wasn't how they stated that, so maybe it was, I don't, I don't know what happened there, so, uh, and as far as the history, um, I had a parent that called me with a concern, and they were actually invited at a high school hockey game to go during the, the break between the periods, go back, where the beer was stored, and between the periods, um, have a glass of beer. That's not acceptable.
I, I understand.
I'm not saying you did that, but the agreement was, at high school hockey games, there'd be no beer, not even a closed-door back room.
Yeah, no beer and no signage.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, I mean, everything.
So how does that happen?
Well, that was the old regime, we'll say.
So another part of the regime, as you call it, that's probably a good name, was that, um, I was told by several people that, um, the way it worked a lot of times is that, um, adult guys that liked to play hockey would go down there at 9:00, 9:30, everything is done, uh, they'd play hockey, sit around, drink beer.
Mm-hmm.
And that's not the intent of a license for their rink either.
I, I agree, yeah, there's guys who're just.
How do we prevent that?
Well, I think with the license, then we can, we can control it, um, you know, 'cause then there's more liability, you know, guys are bringing beer in, you know, which, hockey's, I mean, it's hard, I'm, I'll be forthcoming with that, I mean, it's a hockey bag, you know, it's a, it's a big bag, um, you know, I, I think with license, everything's, then we have signs posted, you know, no carry-ins allowed, which, they're still there, but I think with license, it's just, it puts us at, I don't know how to say that, it puts us at a higher liability, so that way we're gonna be more aware and actually checking, is that, is that a fair way to say it?
Well, yeah, I mean, based on things that I've, was told, and what I've just said, uh, obviously, in my mind, the supervision needs to be more stringent.
No, I agree.
I just don't think it's appropriate, I mean, to have a high school hockey game and adults going and drinking while that's happening is not right, I don't care what the nature of hockey is, or football, or anything else, it's not, it's not appropriate.
Yeah, and that's, that's not gonna happen.
Not what we expect in this community, at least I don't. How, do you know other rinks in suburban Dane County that have a license?
Yep, um, Capital Ice, Capital Ice Arena, um, Verona does, they'll, they do some big events in Verona, they don't have a license, they do the, the temporary stuff, um, Sun Prairie has Willie Ties, actually established within, like, it's the Sun Prairie Ice Arena, and then Willie Ties, which is connected, and that's a full bar, um, past that, I don't, I'd have to think about it, I don't know.
No, I didn't expect it at all, I just was curious what happened.
But then you're looking at, so like the Coliseum, you know, for the Capitals games, they have it, and actually, probably the biggest one, and, not to compare us to Kiva, because Kiva's, I mean, they're way bigger, um, Kiva has a full liquor license.
What, what is that?
Kiva's the sports center in Middleton.
Okay.
So that's for indoor soccer, and they do a ton of events there and whatnot, I mean, they, they have a full liquor license bar.
Okay.
Yeah, and that's all kids and families and other events.
Okay.
Yeah, ours, ours really, you know, like, same rules apply, we're, you know, not during youth hockey games, not during high school hockey games, and really not on a daily basis, it's just, it's primarily for the Whalers games, you know, and then the events that we kind of sprinkle in here and there.
Okay, so we could put a condition on for Whalers games only?
Yes.
And then for other events, Ben could come here and ask for permission?
Well, uh, depends on how the condition is, is, um, structured, yes, you could, you could say that, uh, alcohol may only be sold and consumed at specified events unless the applicant has obtained prior approval from the village board for other events. If, if we're going to be developing conditions, though, I think we need to be making sure that, uh, we do it carefully, we get them in writing, everyone's clear on what they mean, so we could work on developing those tonight, and attempts to put together a motion where those are all articulated, or could, um, work on that tonight and direct staff to come back with something in writing for you to look at. Or could, um, work on that tonight and direct staff to come back with something in writing for you to look at. Depends, I don't know how many we're going to be talking about and how complicated they'll be.
Yeah.
But as, to, to answer your question, the board can attach whatever conditions it believes are appropriate.
I have a question about, um, the questions that you were asking. How many of the things that you were citing are actually a violation of the law versus just a good best practice? Do you know?
Well, I would call them a violation of integrity based on, on the leadership that, that was doing that. I don't think any are violations of the law. But it's clearly a violation of the intent that the license was given for. And I have that same concern, you know, things start to creep out and, you know, become, uh, in my mind, we have a rink that is, what, ninety-five percent high school and younger kids that would use it? We were talking twenty-two Whalers games, everything else is high school and younger, right?
Yeah. Um, I mean, the alumni attorney and then we're going to host some more adult tournaments.
Yeah. But in the past, it's been almost all eighteen and under.
Yep.
So how would you, how would you say this compares or doesn't compare to the bowling alley, for example?
Well, the rink is specified, I mean, the purpose of building it was for high school and youth hockey, not for Whalers games and selling alcohol. You know, and, uh, correct me if I'm wrong, it was on the board, but, uh, we approved before, uh, with fair amount of discussion for the purpose of helping them financially. With some unwritten understandings about how it happened at that time, we didn't know to have them written into, uh, when the license was given or where it would have been. See, my thought is we, uh, we would attach conditions like I mentioned, and I'm only one of seven. You know, you six don't agree or however many, it doesn't happen. That, that the licenses for Whalers games only, other events, um, the agent would come and ask for, for that and there would be no, uh, all you can drink specials and, um, alcohol would not be served at other times. Like breaks in high school games or, uh, after nine o'clock for adults going down and playing hockey.
I think that Ben has addressed most of that, all except for the, uh, all you can drink portion of what you mentioned, uh, in line eight of his application, where he says alcohol alone is served at Whalers hockey games, adult tournaments and other special events. No, no alcohol be visible or advertised during youth sporting events. So I think he's covered, um, almost everything you mentioned.
Now, can, can you tell me what, point out, Jerry, where you're reading?
Line eight of the, uh...
Of the application itself?
The supplemental class B license application.
Let me go to that.
Um, and then just to address the, the all you can drink, all you can eat thing, I mean, that's a model right after the Mallards. So the Mallards, which is the most successful baseball team in that league.
Yeah.
You know, they do the duck blind. And that's really where, you know, I talked to Vern about how he's doing it.
Yeah.
That's where we came up with that.
Do you have a problem with that being a condition that you cannot do that?
No, because it didn't make any money, you know?
Yeah.
Because we'd only get, you know, ten, twelve people down there and then, yeah, it just didn't make sense.
So my suggestion is, uh, the applicant has indicated in, as you say, uh, in line eight, certain limitations that the applicant is, is expecting. I'd make sure you, you know, make that a condition and we might want to use a language that's a little more clear. For example, it refers to other special events. I don't know, that's an undefined term. Youth sporting events is an undefined term. So it sounds like the applicant is open to these, this kind of a limitation. Maybe we could just improve the language a little bit.
Um, the only, sorry, the only one that, so like, I'm fine to, to know, to know all you can drink, all that stuff. My only, the only concern I have is right now, we're trying to put together more of like a VIP adult league for guys twenty-five plus because we're frankly tired of playing with twenty-year-olds in other arenas because they're, anyway. Um, so with that, I mean, if we, if we can serve it during those times and actually have our bar open, then the guys aren't going to feel inclined to bring their own, which is kind of, it helps us and it limits this. Uh, but again, it's only adult, adult-based.
Yeah. How often does that happen?
Hopefully, I mean, if we can get it going, be two hours every Wednesday night.
So that could be written right as a condition on the license?
Mm-hmm.
And that would be an adult hockey league? Is that what you're referring to? Adult defined as what?
Over twenty-one.
Over twenty, over twenty-one hockey league?
Yeah. And actually hopefully it'd be over twenty-five or, I'm even pushing for twenty-eight.
Other questions? So, yeah.
I just had an observation that the premises description here in the application, it covers the entire building and would allow, um, consumption and sale, um, in one place it says throughout building and in another place it says on property. So if you have any concerns about location with respect to where sales, service and consumption can take place, then you should talk about that.
So, um, I think- Where does it have to happen? So it's not the whole building?
Well, it'd be the whole building. I think he, he's talking about the property, which is, includes parking lot exterior. So I think, like, we've done the beer tents in the past. So I think this license is, you know, within the building. And then if we want to do any bigger special events, then I have to come back here, get the permits to do, you know, the fencing and the tent and all that. So I'd say this would include the, the building itself, like, within the confines of the building.
Okay. So Chief Burke, do police have any thoughts on this?
Uh, well, my, my preference would be, um, along the lines of what Matt said in terms of, let's, let's clarify the language first and, and, and get that to a point where it's acceptable not only to us, uh, but it's something that Ben can work with and then bring that back, um, for approval. I, I would, I, I could, I could support that with, with those restrictions.
Otherwise you have trouble supporting them?
Just, just based on, on the little that I knew coming in here, um, yeah, I would have had, I would have had trouble supporting.
Okay. So you're saying with some tighter conditions?
Yeah. I, I, again, I think as long as we define things, like Matt said, we define youth hockey, we define, um, you know, what, what a special event is and all those kinds of, kind of nebulous things. Um, I, I think if we narrow that down and decide what, both what the village wants and what Ben can live with and survive on, um, I, I think it's doable.
So I got a pretty good idea of, of how we could wrestle with youth hockey and, um, and one part that I am kind of looking for Ben's input on is, uh, how would, how would you define a special event? What kind of language would you use if you were going to craft that particular portion?
I mean, I don't, it could be a simple, you know, like a casino night, um, you know, fundraiser. Could be a, you know, like the, like you said, like Oregon straw hat players, they want to come in and use the lobby and, um, you know, if we wanted to do, you know, like one, we, I really want to do a Rockstar hockey game. Okay, like, I work closely with the Midwest family and we've been talking about, it's like, that wouldn't, that wouldn't be a Whalers game. You know, that'd be a separate deal, but it'd be, again, fan experience-based. Um, I, I think just stuff like that. Like, I'm not going to use the special event saying, oh, well, we're going to have a pickup hockey game at, you know, ten o'clock on a Saturday night. Like, that's not a special event. I mean, I'm thinking bigger, broader. Or we're going to attract people.
So it's a, it's definitely not a Whalers hockey game. Um, it's definitely not a tournament. And the target audience would be who for a special event?
Well, I think like, like those, if we did the Rockstar hockey game, then adult, you know, those, those would be adults. You know, but then I guess suppose even the fundraising stuff, um, you know, predominantly it's the parents. You know, so it's being able to serve beer to the parents that are coming down there to give us money. If that makes sense.
So I don't know how, I don't know how we can tighten that up amongst ourselves, um, just as I'm hearing Ben describe it. It kind of seems like a catch-all by definition.
Well, the kind of ant response Ben gave you wasn't a definition that we can work with. I mean, it was examples of events. So it strikes me, it's, it's a challenging definitional problem.
Yeah.
Let me ask this. How many special events do you anticipate every year? Because if it's a limited, if it's a really pretty small number, see a couple of options. One would be to say-
Up to five special events a year or something?
Well, I wasn't thinking that. I was thinking, if you only need, if you're only having a couple a year, is it, is it a hardship to come back to the board and get, you know, approval for those events? So the condition could be you can hold, uh, events, you can, you can serve beer at events other than Whalers hockey games with prior approval from the village board, for example. And if it wasn't too often, then it wouldn't be too burdensome to come back. And then you could explain, this is what I'm doing. You guys could hear it and say yes or no. That would be one option. If you want to try and define the kind of events at which, um, beer could be sold, we'd have to start talking about what that means. And that's a really tricky drafting problem.
Can you, can you come at it from the perspective of the percentage of revenue that goes towards the alcohol sales? Like, that alcohol sales would not be greater than twenty-five percent of the revenue? Or is that a way to come at that? Which kind of puts the burden on ticket sales and other reasons for that thing to take place?
So you'd limit alcohol, well, I mean, maybe, I mean, maybe rev, percentage of revenue is workable. I don't know, I don't, I don't know enough to know whether that, would, that would serve as a reasonable proxy for the kind of event that you're concerned about. And I'm not sure what the other issues are that you might be. I, my sense is that what we're talking about is, is it an adult-oriented kind of event?
How big is it?
Yeah, the size of the event, maybe the frequency of the event.
Yeah.
I mean, isn't the simple thing to do is Ben's asking the board really for a license for the hockey, the hockey, uh, games? To me, that's what I would grant it for. And, and then if the board approves that, of course. And then any other, other thing, he has to come back to the board and talk to the board about. Rather than trying to define what is, I mean, that's what I would do. I mean, he can always change it going-
Yeah, I, I, I think that's, makes sense. And, and here's a, here's something I would add to that that might reduce your concern about that. So for example, if you decided you, you wanted to establish this adult hockey league and you wanted the ability to serve beer during an adult hockey league game, if you had that pieces put together for that, you could come back to the board. If the, if the condition is structured correctly, you could come back to the board and say, okay, now I want to expand the scope of events where I can sell beer to include this adult hockey league. Here's what it is, here's what it looks like.
I'm fine with that.
And the board could say, okay, now, now that's covered. And you'd come one time, you wouldn't have to come back for every game. That would, that would cover that. On the other hand, if you have other kinds of events that might be one-off events, like a casino night, you do one time, I mean, it's hard to come up with a definition that might capture all the kinds of things that you might want to do. So if, if the board does what Mike suggested, which is to say, you can, you can sell, at this point, we're giving you authority to sell beer at Whalers hockey games, subject to whatever other, I mean, I don't know how we might, what else we might need to say about that. I heard other things about maybe times before and after. I'm not sure if there's anything else we need to say about that. But if, if that's what, if, if we say you can sell at those games, but, uh, no other times without prior authority or approval from the village board, then that's what you've got. And you can come back and either expand the scope of that to include, say, an adult league or on a case-by-case basis for specific events. To me, that's the easiest way to manage this. We can work on a, a definition of special events, but that's a challenge.
Yeah.
I actually like it that way better.
You like the way I described it better?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, because then I get to come in front of you guys and then I get to be on TV and then the community gets to hear about the event I got.
That's true.
That's where my mind goes.
You haven't changed, Ben.
Well, parts of me have gone-
Yeah, that's true. Parts haven't since middle school, so.
I, I do think one of the, one of the approvals should be, or a condition should always be that the police chief is signing off on this security. So even for the initial thing, but also any special events, that's the reason for having Ben come back. Then the police chief can always say thumbs up or thumbs down on the security.
So a security plan?
That's my opinion. If the board agrees with that.
I'm just taking notes of what I'm hearing. And then I don't know if you're going to direct staff to come back with a draft of conditions or if you're going to try and approve tonight.
So it sounds like we're saying Whalers games, not that we agreed on this, but right now we're at Whalers games, other special events, Ben comes back, no all-you-can-drink at any time.
Security required.
Yeah, security required. Police need to sign off on a security plan. Is that where we are?
Yeah, I'd actually be okay making that motion. It sounds like Ben's in agreement with that.
Yeah, I think we just need to have it drawn up. Uh, we found it's better if we have things in writing and we vote on them as opposed to, uh, kind of agreeing and then coming back to it. I mean, you certainly can see where it goes if you want to.
Let me just summarize where, where I understand you. So I heard the, the conditions being Whalers games only without prior approval. I think I heard no all-drink, all-you-can-drink specials. I heard a security plan has to be in place and approved by Chief Police.
And I, I would just say that wouldn't necessarily have, there wouldn't necessarily have to be a security plan for each event. That would be, I, I would say that would be dependent upon what, what the expectations are, you know, in terms of attendance and, and so on and so forth. But I would like there to at least be, um, a, a discussion or a communication about, you know, this, this is what we're anticipating. And, and then we, we could decide, yeah, you're going to need security or no, you won't need security for that. Does that make sense?
Okay. So the way I would draft the condition is there would need to be a security plan relating to events at which alcohol would be served, approved by Chief of Police. If the chief chooses to approve a plan that says, you don't have to talk to me unless you're going to have more than fifty people, that's up to the chief. Okay. Um, so, so I have those three. One that I, I didn't hear that I think, I didn't hear just now, but we talked about is, do you want to, uh, be more precise about the premises description so that it applies to just the building and not the entire property? Do you want to be more specific than the building? Do you want to? And so I don't know where you are on that. I think I heard that from the applicant that his intent is to only serve beer in the building. But right now it says in the building, in one place it says on the property and another, so it's ambiguous.
Yeah, I think in the building, uh, for, my opinion is in the building is the right parameters and that if Ben's got some special event that's going to take it outside of the building, he'd be coming back here. That'd be, that'd be my opinion.
Okay, so that, now I have four with that one. And so you, you can either attempt to craft a motion tonight that the clerk can record that will include those conditions and vote on it. So it'll be a motion to approve the license subject to following conditions and changes. Or you could direct staff to draft, um, a set of conditions based on that direction and bring it back to you for you to discuss and vote at a subsequent meeting, whatever you're more comfortable with.
So I'm in favor of the latter because then there's no misunderstanding. It's crystal clear with Ben with us, Chief of Police, knowing that. So you don't have any big hurry, do you?
No.
I mean, when do Whalers games start?
Well, they have, they have a camp, so they do like an open trial, um, that August seventh, eighth and ninth.
But you won't be selling alcohol there, will you?
Probably not.
Okay. So that's, that's why we have to be careful with language because what's a Whalers game? Is that a camp with an open trial?
I'd say no. Like, we don't, we don't, I just want to know that we can get it for, our first game's September eleventh.
And, and my goal-
Okay. So that's your timeline, September eleventh?
I mean, if we have the first part of August.
Yeah, July, it shouldn't be a problem.
And my goal is to make sure that the board, Police Department, the applicant are all crystal clear.
So there should be another condition, define what's a game.
Well, I mean-
I, I would.
If, if you're just articulating a motion, it, it's, it's, it's easier to end up with ambiguous language than if we write something out, we have time to think about it, you have time to see it, he has time to see it. We can spot potential issues, get it really clear. So if you're not in a big hurry, I think that's a better course. I mean, frankly.
So can this come back by August third?
I don't see why not.
Three weeks away, yeah.
I do think it's important, I do think it's important that Ben, that Ben and the board agree on the spirit of what it is- of what it is we're, we're doing here. Uh, because you can tighten this up as much as you want, and at the end of the day, whether, whether Ben violated the letter of the law or the spirit of the law, I think we're still gonna have a hard conversation with Ben. Uh, so if Ben says, well, you didn't define a game, so I just decided I was gonna define it this way, I don't see that Ben gets a free pass, uh, from the board, because things go sideways and we find out that he was serving alcohol, it's something that we wouldn't consider a game, because I think the way that conversation goes is, you know, anybody, anybody who would generally know what a hockey game was would have considered what you did a hockey game, so, you know, just because it fell outside of the parameters of this tight definition that we came up with, that doesn't give you a, a pass. This isn't a court of law, we're not looking for a preponderance of the evidence or, or any other sort of like legal.
Could I just respond to that?
Yeah.
I wish it were so. It's not. When push comes to shove, it's the letter of the law. Because, yes, you can call somebody in and you can say, you didn't follow the spirit, but you have no power other than to scold.
Once, once the license is issued.
Yeah, once the license is issued. If in fact, the agreement is ambiguous, or something that you want as a condition isn't there, you'll, you'll be without power to, to enforce it. This gets back to the discussion, I think, of maybe previous understandings based on discussions that weren't codified. There's only so much you could do with that. I, I wish you were right.
So there's, there's no, um, I don't wanna drag this on, but this is a good learning opportunity for me as well. There's no sort of responsibility for parties to follow a reasonable understanding of the law. For, for example, if, if it should be, if, if it could be proven that I should reasonably know that what I did did not meet the guidelines that were set forth, isn't that enough for me to be in violation of the guidelines that were set forth?
Well, um, so here's, here's how it'd go legally, here's how it'd go legally. We've got a motion, let's say somebody makes a motion and it refers to Whalers games.
Yeah.
And it's drafted and it's approved, and then their Whalers play a, what'd you call it, a trial game?
Well, you said trials.
Camp.
Trial camp, and, and they, and they actually play a game at trial camp? And, uh, and we say, that's a violation, and he says, no, it's not, it's not a game. Or he says, no, it is, we had a game, and we say, well, any reasonable person would know that's not a game, and we're in court. The rule of construction is that an ambiguity is construed against the drafter, we drafted it, we lose. That's, in the world that I live in, it matters. Language is critical, and it's everything at the end of the day. And, and reasonableness frankly goes out the window. I'm sorry.
Yeah.
It's just the way, it not, it doesn't always go out the window, but.
The legal license.
It sure seems, it sure seems like it goes out the window a lot in my, in my world. Cause you know, anytime I draft language that's ambiguous, uh, well, let's just say it's happened when, you know, the other side will make you very aware of the shortcoming of your drafting, when you're trying to enforce something. It's very tough.
Okay.
So if, if you've got the time, be careful with the language.
Anything else, Doug?
Um, just to review, again, I was reading when you were speaking that earlier, regarding the definition of where the alcohol sales could take place, will it be inside the building or is it the property? What was your recommendation?
Well, I think, I think you wanted, I think one, you want one of your conditions to be that it would be, alcohol could only be sold, served.
Consumed.
Consumed, stored, inside the building itself.
Item ten, Ben, indicates that you would have an occasional outside festival?
Is this on the supplemental?
Yes, it is. Just clarify what that's intended to be.
Um, well, I think, I don't know, like I, there's so many papers, I kinda got lost in all the paperwork. That would, that would have, anything outside the building would have to come back here for approval. Just like for the alumni attorney, we did the beer tent, you know, got all the approval for that.
So you're okay with the condition says inside sales only?
Yeah. Much safer for, yeah.
Yeah. So he's okay with the condition for inside sales only?
Okay, so I have, and I have another recommendation. I, I didn't review the supplement to the applica, I didn't review, I, I'd had a brief discussion with Mike about this today, but I, I haven't done an analysis of the application. So I'm seeing things in the supplemental, uh, that might be construed as opening the door to various things. So, um, I think another thing that would be helpful, if we have time, is to review it to see if there are statements like, there will be occasional outdoor events that we need to catch and say, oh, we need to talk about that.
So, so maybe we could do with the board, you know, something that to close the hearing, but maybe if, if there's a, the board's decision after the hearing's closed to, you know, move this forward. You know, maybe we could do is bring it back, you know, at another meeting before the third. Have, make sure Ben's okay with, make sure the board's okay, and then when, when we bring it on the third, it's, it's just an adoption.
Yeah, I'd like to see Ben see it before it comes back here for actual action.
So we could either bring it.
It's only fair to you.
And then you're.
And, and the other, the other thing that I'm wondering about, because this is, this is the first new license that I can think of that I've been here to discuss with the supplemental application. And what I'm not sure about is whether everything that's included in the supplemental, if you grant the license, is everything in the supplemental already deemed part of what is required or allowed? Or does that need to be addressed? I think we should, we should know whether, whether, we should say whether all of the, all or some of the things that are either allowed or required by the supplemental are in fact allowed or required. So for example, he has, you know, a statement in here that food will always be served when alcohol is being served. So I guess what I, what I'm not sure, certain about is if we, if we didn't say anything about the supplemental, and we just voted to approve the license, would, would the, would that effectively serve as a condition, a requirement that food be served? Or do we have to actually go beyond that, do we have to say that? And, uh, so I, I, I don't know for sure what the answer is, so my preference would be to say, make it clear. He's saying that food will be served whenever alcohol is being served. I would either find a way to globally say, all of the requirements and prohibitions and statements in the supplemental are in fact part of your license. Even that's a little fuzzy, I might go through and say, what do we know about this that we wanna say, yep, you gotta serve food? Nope, only inside the building. So.
And, and then you're getting the definition of food, right? Is food popcorn or is food of rotwurst?
If you want to, we can, yeah, and then you'll decide at what point are you comfortable, like, you don't worry, you're not, you don't care if it's just popcorn. But if you want, you know, hot dogs and burgers.
Dependents by the time we're done.
If you want hot, well, I mean, if, some communities, I don't know what they do in Madison, but I think they have pretty extensive, I mean, I think their licenses buttoned up pretty tight.
Yeah.
And so nobody, everybody knows, what does food mean? It's not just popcorn.
Yeah, and Ben checks sandwiches and pizza on, on the application.
Yeah, so we probably have enough information here. This is good. Is this, is this your world, or is this, uh, somebody else's world? Alcohol licensing.
Candy and Peggy.
So this would be a good learning exercise for Candy, she could take a supplemental like this, and she could prepare something for you that incorporates what's in here, and be ready to go. The, these are complicated, I mean, these are not, I mean, they can be if you take it seriously. They can be complicated things to, to put together.
Anything else, Doug?
I, I think for now, you know, I, I'd be content if, say, Mike or someone on the staff worked with the village attorney and Ben, and everybody incorporated all their conditions for review at the next meeting or whenever we wanna pick this up again.
Yeah, it sounds like Ben's okay with that process, too. Does that sound okay, everybody? Okay. Does that work for a direction of staff?
Oh, yeah, sure. Yep.
Anything else, Ben?
No, should, Mike, should I just contact you? Yeah, well, what I'm, I need to talk to Matt about is schedule Monday, whether you're gonna bring it back next Monday or the following Monday. Have the board look at the conditions and, and, you know, with Ben, if they're okay, then have it ready to go on the, for the third, for adoption.
Okay. Okay. Anything else? Okay, we'll close the public hearing then.
Cool.
Thanks, Ben.
Thank you.
We ready for four B, Mike?
We are.
Okay. So under public appearances, item B, discussion with Randy Gliss regarding pump house information and painting of downtown water tower and reaction by board members. Welcome to Arlen Kai also. Nice article in paper, by the way, a while back. Put quite a print on Madison.
Good ink, it's good ink.
Yeah. That's true. Randy, welcome.
So I think, uh, each of you have a little packet in front of you. I'm just gonna give some little background, I think I sent you all an email, a little update on the Welcome Center. I think it's, um, maybe exceeded my expectations of what we created across the street. I, I, I just hear so many positive comments from people who come in. Sometimes I can hardly believe what it looks like inside, from what it used to look like, but, um, it, I think it's, it's a, it's a, it's become a, quite an asset to the community. And, um, so shortly after the grand opening, and I knew this was coming, people would say, what's next? What about that thing above the building? The water tower, the water tower. And I think a lot of people see that as one thing, and in fact, if you know that the beam actually goes through the building, it is actually one, one structure. So a lot of people have said, um, when are we gonna tackle the water tower? They don't wanna see it down, it's an icon of the village, it's been an icon for a long time. So I said, well, we'll see, we'll see, we'll see what happens. One of the things that, it has not been painted for thirty-four years, uh, there is extensive rust, especially on the legs. If you saw, I think I sent you all the video that somebody took with a drone, that actually goes up and, and, and shows the, the tower. The methods of, of painting water towers now have, has evolved. I think the, the bid that was from, what, two thousand eight or two thousand seven, that twenty, two thou, or twenty-five, two, wait, two hundred and fifty thousand dollar bid, that was encapsulated, that was actually a sandblasted, uh, method. Uh, that is one way to do it. This, if we sandblasted this water tower, this would be half a million dollars now, uh, to do. Typically, it's not done anymore, they use the, the water under pressure method. And in fact, in fall, we did a test with the water pressure method of one of the legs. And then we primed it and painted it, wanted to see how it would hold up over the winter. So, um, it looks like it's, it's pretty good. So one of the things that I wanted to do is I wanted to find out, what, what are the current cost? What would it cost to do the water method? And that's in your packet, so I got two informal bids. One is from Dixon Engineering, you'll see, for, and the bid is ninety thousand dollars. That's one, one coat of primer and one, one coat of paint, um, from Dixon Engineering. The second bid you'll see is from Lane Tank Company, and my understanding is they have painted the village towers in the past. You'll see the bid is for thirty-eight thousand dollars. And that includes, uh, primer and two coats of paint. And fixing some of the, the visible things that we, we know that have to be fixed. So, so, so I guess why I'm here is we, we need to paint this thing, and I think we need to paint this thing sooner than later. I mean, it's, the legs are, are pretty rusted, we gotta get this rust off. I think if we're gonna do it, we need to do it soon. I did ask the Lane Tank, what, what would it cost? Let's say, we gotta take it down. Starting would be sixty thousand dollars to take it down. I hope that would never happen, I think it is unique to the village, I think it's, it is important. As you know, it's on the historic registry too. So, so the, so the ask, I think, is we, we need your help to get this thing painted. I think these are reasonable bids, especially the thirty-eight thousand, I like the guy, I met him here, we looked at it. He likes historic, uh, water, this is, he, water towers, this is what he does for a living. So, so that, so I'm opening up the conversation, we wanna go forward, I think we should go forward, and I know Arlen is dying to say something.
We'll say something then. This is a, this is the icon of the village. You have the banner behind you, you have it on the letterhead. So it is part, it's identifying, you take it down, and the village is going to certainly be lesser for it. But we need, uh, and it's been identified again and again in different reports. The, uh, see the TIF, uh, so we're the master plan.
Hold the phone.
I advise, uh, it has something that needs to be maintained and restored. Early on, when Joe, uh, deputy district chair of the, uh, Landmarks Commission, we had obtained, uh, studies, engineering studies, because it was concerned of the stability of the tower. I found out, hey, the tower is in great shape, yeah, it's rusty, but it's not structurally deficient. It is structurally sound, and can be, uh, will be sound for quite a few more years. But the village needs to be stepping up and making a commitment. Thirty-four years, nothing's happened. We have, I shouldn't say nothing's happened, thank you Randy for making, you're getting the pump house and the grounds in good shape and getting a lot of people excited, looking forward, yeah, something can be done. So I'm looking for the village to be making a commitment. Even if the paint only lasts fifteen years, and it costs the thirty-eight, make it forty-five thousand for easy figuring, that means that every year the village needs to make a commitment of three thousand dollars to have the tower painted. Not bad. Double it with inflation, not bad. And it preserves the icon that we have here, but we need the board to say, yep, we're gonna do it. And it's up to the board to say, how are we gonna do that? How are we gonna get the bids? You're, this will be part of your general budget revenue. So as chairman of the Landmarks Commission, and without a formal vote from the Landmarks Commission, I'm urging you to be taking that action, to be making a commitment to fix this grand old gal, that's the icon of the village.
We haven't had a lot of discussion about the water tower recently, um, you know, so I don't think we can say, yeah, we're ready to go on this, and our budget deliberations started in October, which we have to tie together, so, uh, I mean, I, I have a sense, I think the board would like to get something out of the water tower, since the pump house looks so nice, and it's come down from two hundred and fifty thousand to thirty-eight thousand, we like, we like things moving that direction. Usually goes the other way.
So, so the one thing I wanna make clear is that the, the, both bids, I mean, they won't guarantee that the, the thing is gonna last fifteen years. It's because it's got layers. The, the water method, you know, they'll try to get as much of the paint off, and what they do is they'll, because it is lead paint, they're gonna tarp everything, they may have to tarp the buildings next to it, uh, because the stuff is gonna fall. So I just wanna make, make everybody, it's not gonna be like it's gonna last fifteen, twenty years. They're not gonna guarantee that, because it's been painted a couple times.
Yeah. I think also, when, I mean, for, I just wanna make sure that, um, so when Randy met with Mark and me, I mean, the, you know, the, Randy's looking for a commitment from the board, obviously, before we start working on this, but then, you know, Randy's making a commitment to try to raise some of the money, some of the fundraising. I think we're trying to, we're, we're talking about maybe fifteen of the thirty-eight, or fifteen of the forty, that maybe we could raise.
I, I am willing to.
Or ten.
Raise as much as I can. I mean, we, we have a, we have, I think, about seven thousand left in the, in the fund from.
So we can guarantee a seven thousand?
Yeah.
Thank you, Arlen.
So in, in actually, like, uh, Lane wouldn't be able to do it until next spring anyway, because of their, they're just, they have so many jobs. The sooner we get a, I would like, personally, if I get a commitment from the village, it's sort of this, I could go ahead and, and raise all the money probably, but it's part of, for me, it's this principal thing, it's a village, it's a piece of the village, and I wanna know that it means something to the village. I get a commitment from the village, I'll, I'll work my hardest to, to raise as much money as I can.
So what kind of commitment do you want tonight?
If the commitment to the, the village is going to be responsible for maintaining the water tower and. and that it will be maintained. How you get the funds, that's up to you. But I mean, count that every, well, if paint only lasts 15 years, count every 15 years, the village is gonna have responsibility to be doing it.
It'd probably be nice for Randy to know. I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you, Arlen.
No, no, that's just, it's planning on that this is a commitment that every so often, you've got to be maintaining something. Every building, the minute it's built, starts to die. And you have to maintain it.
And what I'm hearing Randy say is, is even before that, we need to commit to painting it in the first place.
Yes.
I do, 'cause I'll start fundraising tomorrow.
So and I'm comfortable that Randy will fundraise as much as he can. And me personally, I, you know, I think it is a landmark of the village. I think it's responsibility of the village to keep it up in good order. And I'd be comfortable letting Randy lead with the confidence that we're gonna make up the difference. If it's $38,000 to paint the water tower and Randy goes out and fundraises whatever he can, we'll find the rest.
If he's like he was before, he'll fundraise about 60,000.
Probably, well, that's probably hedging, hedging your bets, right?
In 10 years again.
Okay, I got a question of you. Randy has now solicited two proposals. So he didn't have the insurance expects?
Yeah, we'll have to redo them, obviously.
What is your procedures for obtaining bids for the water tower? Is it, is it a casual thing?
We typically do two to three proposals, depending on the size of the project. We would get, try and get some, we have some baseline for what needs to be done.
Okay, so you can be, so for this notification, so that's the kind of
Yeah, it'd be a formal document, right, Mark? Yeah.
Yeah, and I understand that, I just wanted to see, was this thing even doable? What were they gonna say, 250, 300,000? Is it even feasible to even look at?
Oh, when I saw 38,000, I thought it was feasible.
Yeah.
That was my thought.
Yeah.
And is there a possibility that you could engage the visitors to the Welcome Center in some sort of like indomine effort? You know, sort of a free will offering at the door? In terms of help us, you know, help us keep this water tower, pump house in good shape?
Yeah, we'll, not giving too much of my secrets away, but we'll launch the Tin Man campaign. That's actually the style of the water tower. So I have lots of ideas. In fact, Lilliana's that's coming is willing to do a fundraiser for us, for the water tower. So I have some ideas, but I need to know that the village is committed to this.
When I asked the question, everybody smiled, shook their head yes. And staff did also. Does that give you what you need?
I actually went ahead and put it in the capital improvement plan. So that way, and the board could take it out, but I thought
Sounds like a done deal.
I wanted to put in, it's been, lose track of, but I mean, to me now, if it's in the plan, then it, you know, if the board agrees with it, then it, we're going forward with it.
Yeah, what number did you use, Mike?
I used the 38, but I mean, I, you know, I think that you may make another point, we have to go and get, actually get official proposals.
And they may, you know, we sort of just visually, it's like some of the wood pieces that are going up in the middle, we know that they have to be reattached. There may be some other things way at the top that have to be welded. So, you know, until they sort of get up there or really do a formal inspection, there may be other things that we don't know about.
Sounds like from seven of us that we're saying, "Go do it."
Okay.
Does that give you what you need?
It does.
Yeah, put the calls to it, 'cause I come up for reelection in April, so.
All right.
Depending on how this goes, you might be down to six.
All right, we're going for it.
So something's included in the capital budget?
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Good job, Randy.
Thank you.
Well, it's really, by the way, I wanted to comment, what a great strategy that was to Photoshop out the water tower in the photo of the pump house. That was brilliant. You freaked me out for a minute there, I thought it was gone.
Out of place, without the tower.
It's not even a pump house.
Okay, so that takes us down to item number eight, Proclamations and Announcements. And first is Board Comments. And item one is the proclamation for August as Children's Vision and Learning Month. And I will read that for people who are watching. Whereas children across the state of Wisconsin prepare for the start of the new school year, many of them will begin their studies with undiagnosed and untreated vision problems. And whereas research shows that vision disorders are the number one handicapped and condition of children. In fact, as many as one in four school-aged children have vision problems, according to the College of Optometrists in Vision Development. And whereas all children deserve the opportunity to learn and achieve their full potential. And whereas for the above reasons, public awareness about learning-related vision problems is necessary to ensure that young people receive the prompt vision treatment they need to enhance their lives. And now therefore, I, Stephen L. State, President, Village of Oregon, Wisconsin, in accord with the Office of the Governor of the State of Wisconsin in recognition of the importance of good vision to learning, to hereby proclaim August 2015 as Children's Vision and Learning Month. I encourage parents, educators, school nurses, and all concerned adults to recognize a critical role. Good vision plays in the learning process and to work together to help prevent or reduce the impact untreated vision problems can have on our children's ability to read and learn. Thank you for taking the time to listen as I went through that. It is an important item for kids at school, obviously. Any other Board comments?
Yes, I have. On next Tuesday, July 21st, at 6:30, we're going to have a retirement party for Chief Blue. He's been with the Fire Department for 10 years and that will be held at the Fire Department.
Next Tuesday, at 10:30?
6:30.
Next Tuesday?
Next Tuesday, July 21st.
6:30.
I think you have an email on, I believe, from Phil.
Yeah, we did get information on that.
Yeah, but I want the public to know that.
I appreciate that, Arlen. Good for you, thank you. Any other Board comments? Seeing none, we'll go to Staff Comments. Mike, July meeting schedule?
I just wanted to remind the Board that we're having that special meeting next week, Wednesday night, at the Senior Center for the, with the towns and villages of Brooklyn. At 6:30.
Thank you. Item nine, Communication, Miss Lane's Business. Item A, Discussion of Possible Action. Consideration of Unpaid Leave of Absence for Library Employee.
Real quick, if I could?
Yeah.
So is that in lieu of the Monday meeting or in addition to the Monday meeting?
No, we're having a Board meeting, but this is the, so we're having a Board meeting on the 20th, the joint meeting on the 22nd. And then we'll have committee meetings on the 27th. So we have two night meetings next week.
Thank you.
Sure.
Sorry, Steve.
No, that's mine, no problem. So again, item A, Consideration of Unpaid Leave of Absence for Library Employee. Susan?
Yes, this is a staff member who recently was promoted from a 12-hour position to a 20-hour position. And she does, she's looking for 16 hours of unpaid leave so she can go on vacation with her family. And she won't be eligible for any kind of vacation until, for another six months, so. And when she was, when she was at 12 hours, she, we were able to adjust her schedule. We didn't have to worry about unpaid leave. But now she's in a different position, which requires us to have Village Board approval for her to go on unpaid leave.
And what's your recommendation?
Well, I think it's fine. She works four hours a day and we have, we often are covering for people who are on vacation. So she would just be another person, well, 'cause she wouldn't be on vacation, she'd be on unpaid leave. We would be able to cover it fine. In August, things slowed down a little bit too for the library, so it would be fine.
Okay, thank you.
So she's asking for just the days of August 7th through 15th off, is that right?
Right, but she only works four hours a day. So it would just be 16 hours.
So it's just a week that she'd be asking for?
Right.
Okay.
So she has, so now that time would be paid time off? She has no, she has no paid time off available? 'Cause I guess, I think I misread that then. I thought she was taking some time off with pay.
Yeah, that's what it looks like here.
Yeah. Right. And, and, and I don't mean, this goes back to the other issue we had a couple of months ago with the other employee that the Board granted this, but the Board then fronted the vacation. And she, she's saying she doesn't wanna do that, but she's gonna burn her vacation. But one of my thoughts on this is that I'm gonna ask Kyle, the Village Attorney, to redo the policy in the handbook because, you know, the way that policy's been used since I've been here, I mean, before, was that the unpaid leave of absence has been granted for employees for family and medical reasons, not just to take additional vacation. I think I explained that. I mean, the employee has a right to ask, and it's a Board decision. But I got the impression she, she was tacking this on to paid time off. Unless I'm misreading that.
Maybe I missed, well?
Yeah.
And she's a new employee, right?
Well, she, her anniversary date, she worked last year as a 12-hour, 12-hour a week employee. And then she was added to a 20-hour position as of January 5th, 2015. So it's just been since January, she's working 20 hours a week. And she had, she's been taking vacation in August with her family. But before, she was only 12 hours a week and she was with no benefits whatsoever. And so we were able to just allow her to take that time, unpaid leave. And that's what has been sort of the tradition in the past. So now that she's at 20 hours and the Village Administration has been asking us now to have employees write a letter requesting the time of unpaid leave.
And if you were gonna, like, hip-shoot what you would be asking Kyle to do to the policy, what sort of amendments would you be putting in there?
That it would be just used for, for medical and family reasons. Not, not just when somebody wants to take, the problem is, and she's addressing it here, the problem is if you have an employee who's working 20 hours a week and they take, say, a week off without pay, then it, or even longer, it drops them under to 20 hours and it's, it sort of, for better term, screws up their whole benefit calculation because they're in there for the whole year. She's, she's not gonna have that issue. But this, for some reason, we've got these two requests in the last year that, I mean, I worked her, how long before we had these types of requests? The point of this, of this section in the handbook is related to, it's supposed to be for emergency, not just to extend someone's vacation or time off.
So would you
But, but that isn't, I, but that's not how the policy stays right now. So I don't, I'm not, I think what she did was right, she had the right to ask for it. But I just think that, I don't believe that, that's not how it's been interpreted in the past, implemented in the past.
Would you support a counter in allowing her to front load the vacation?
She, she's asking not to do that.
I know.
Oh.
If she was to say that she wanted the vacation front loaded, would you be more in favor of that?
Sure, and then you, and then the Board could do the same motion that we did with the other employee and say, "Front it, it's not setting a precedent." But I do think now that we're getting these, I think we should clarify the policy in the handbook going forward.
Yeah, it is, it's a little bit confusing for people.
No, she has a right to ask for, I'm not, she did the right thing, I'm not disputing that. But I just think, it hasn't been used in this respect for a long time. And part of it's been, to be honest with you, somebody would come into my office and they would ask, and I would just say, "Well, my interpretation is that's not what it's supposed to be used for." We've granted it on very few occasions when somebody had to go back, you know, out of state for family health reasons and things like them. But yeah, if you, if she wanted to front it, I think that would be consistent like we did, like, last December with some other employee. But then I do think we should probably change the policy then.
If we don't ask her to front it, are we gonna be causing ourselves problems with what was stated to the other employee again at this time?
Well, you handled it differently, I will admit, yeah. And that's what Jeff's pointing, I think.
I know, I'm just wondering if we say yes to this without asking her, or almost requesting her to front her vacation.
Yeah, that was a requirement in the last case. They use vacation time first. We fronted some, 'cause she hadn't yet earned it, but we moved it up to the period she wanted and gave it to her.
So I guess it'd be consistent, you would, I think actually Ginny had made that motion back at the Personnel Meeting back in December that you, or some of the other committees, that, you know, your employee gets the vacation fronted and this is not setting a precedent. But now that we've gotten the second request, I do think we should change the policy. So you have to keep going through this.
Yeah.
I mean, is the Board agree that the unpaid leave should be for emergencies versus just extending someone's vacation? I mean, I think that's how we've always interpreted it.
Well, in this case, I don't think it's extending her vacation. I think it's a new employee, a new employee technically, that doesn't, hasn't earned it yet and wants to take the time off.
And she's not asking for an extension.
Yeah.
Right. But if you, but if you don't give her the time off, then she's gotta work.
Right.
So
I think the other thing I'm hearing Mike say is, "Good for once, good for all." So if, if you do let her use unpaid time for time away from work and there aren't restrictions on it, like, like emergency or family, then you open up the door for any village employee who wants to take a two-week vacation but only has a week in the bank to say,
To do it, right.
"I should be able to do that, I'm not worried about the money."
Well, and you, and you gave it, that's, and you, and you granted it to other employees already, so.
And that's what you're trying to avoid.
Right.
Yeah.
And like I said, this hasn't been a problem. I can't think, it's gotta be at least 20, 10 or 12 years before this ever happened, so.
Yeah, I don't recall.
I know, it's been, all of a sudden, it's been a
Has this been to Personnel yet?
No, this, this came directly to the Board.
And I think we'd be really inconsistent and unfair of the other employee if we didn't ask this one to front their vacation.
I would agree with that.
Do you have a reaction, Susan, to fronting the vacation?
Well, I mean, she has been working extra hours covering for other people's vacations. So technically, according to her letter too, she's, she's ahead of the game as far as her hours go because we've been paying her, because other people are, who have earned their vacations are off. And when we hired her in January, in, I guess in the past, like I mentioned earlier, she had no benefits whatsoever and she was able, we were able to adjust her schedule as we went along. So now she's looking at her family vacation, which she goes every year in August, like, or maybe most people do, August or July. And now she won't be able to go with the family. And I guess she's sort of thinking, since she's put in the extra hours already and we can cover her open shifts, it's only 16 hours. It's not like it's a week, in a sense, you know, and that's, it's 16 hours, so. I mean, but I understand what you, I understand what you're trying to say, is that you need to be consistent. I'm not arguing with that at all. I just think that she's an individual case. I guess I would prefer to think of it as being an individual cases. She is in sort of a unique situation, where she was advanced from a 12-hour to a 20-hour. And it's not really an extension, it's just what she was used to in the past. And I have other pages too, who are under 20 hours, who don't have any benefits whatsoever. And I imagine it could happen where they would be interested in taking some time too, unpaid leave, since this is a new, this is a new procedure now.
Yeah. So how would you suggest we would answer the previous employee, would say?
Well, I wasn't privy to that information. I didn't know you had a previous employee. I didn't know, Steve, so. And surely she didn't know either, obviously.
Right.
I would think a good response would be handle these requests on a case-by-case basis. I mean, if employee doesn't like it, what recourse do they really have? Other than to leave? And if she's a good employee, we don't want that to happen.
Well, she's an excellent, she's an excellent employee.
And so I, I think that in cases like this, if we have the Susan sponsoring this and supporting it, and she says it's a good employee, that we wanna help her out in that respect. Because I assume it's hard to get good employees.
It's, well, the, the hard part is that it's very difficult to train. It takes us probably four to six months to train someone in this position. And she's, she has wonderful customer service, she's a great employee. She's always on time, she's never
I guess my question for Mike would be, say the other employee didn't like it or another employee doesn't like it, and we do something different with somebody else, what recourse do they have? They really don't have recourse. So I think we
It's, it's, it's a, you know, I'm gonna say it's a Board decision, you know.
Right, 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 I know, but I mean, it's not
I always say that to you, right?
It's not like it's gonna go into litigation or anything like that. It's not like it's gonna cost us attorney fees.
Nope, no, no, no.
So I, I mean, I guess I support Susan's request. And I'd like to make sure she can retain a good employee.
I, I think Jeff's looking at, not that you're not looking at, the big picture that if we, if this keeps happening, we're gonna have, how do you tell then a full-time employee, "Well, you're different, you, we're not gonna give you the extra, you know, half a week off." I mean, that, that's the only issue with it. So I mean, if you grant it, my opinion is, you know, I think I'm gonna have Kyle change the policy so that this doesn't always end up in your lap every couple of months, you know.
And I can't say that it won't happen again. You know, I, I have a lot of, lot of part-time people, so.
But if they're under, if they're under 20 hours, as we've discussed,
Right.
it doesn't matter, they're not getting bennies.
No, it doesn't matter. And the folks who have been, you know, employed as a 20-hour employee for a series of years, they already have that, you know, they have their vacation and they use their, their appropriate floating holidays and they use their, their appropriate floating holidays and they use their vacation time that they have been owed. This woman is just sort of caught in between, that's, I think is what's happened, so.
And I, I would add, um, to the discussion, you know, being in the private business world, we don't allow unpaid time off because it can become a labor law issue down the road when you start to make one-off exceptions for employees. It becomes very difficult to explain why one employee was allowed to do something and another was not allowed to do the same thing. And you can say, well, we treat each request individually, but I think there's an, an understanding and an assumption in, in the workplace that people will be treated equally, uh, given circumstances and not, not necessarily individually. So there are ways that we've allowed for this in, in my experience in business and that typically that has been to allow somebody to take vacation time that hasn't been earned yet. Because that does level the playing field and it allows for the individual with an individual need to have that need met in a way that we would consistently apply time and again.
I appreciate totally what you're saying and I do understand, and I, I did not know about the other employee, I'm so sorry, I did not know.
It's quite all right.
But I suppose the other option would be she could drop back down to twelve hours a week. You know, that would be the, and then she could, right?
It's true.
She could do that. And we have to find someone else to fill in those hours. Um, and she could take her vacation and leave it, and leave her at twelve hours. I don't know if she's interested in that or not, but this is a board decision and I know Mike has asked us to write, you know, have these letters written, so it, it, and, um, he asked us to come to, um, the village board, not the library board, so.
So I actually checked the library, the village board has the authority on something like this.
Right, no, you, you told me that, so that's why, um, she has written this letter, so I, I'm gonna, you know, you need to use your good judgment and what you feel is fair, so I, I'm all about being fair. But I also am an advocate for my staff and you all know that. And, um, uh, she is a, all I can say, she's a wonderful employee and I, I, I just, I just say that it's an unusual circumstance for this one employee, so.
What's hard for me is, is what's, I mean, this seems like a reasonable request, it seems fair. On the other hand, with another employee where we turned it down.
Right, right.
Front of vacation and that seemed fair too, so.
Right.
Will you flip a coin?
So I mean, I, I don't mean to put you in a difficult position.
Well, I'm gonna make a motion to deny the request as it's written. Um, I, I wanna go on record in saying that I don't know this employee, but I have every confidence that she is a five-star outstanding gold employee and that we're lucky to have her as a village and I'm looking forward to meeting her one day. My motion is strictly based on the precedent that we set with the last employee and my concern that we have a, a fair and level playing field for all employees. And, and so if I can get a second or not, then this moves forward and off we go.
So is that to deny it and front the vacation?
I would make a motion to deny the letter as written. If, I'm, I'm open to a counter allowing her to take her vacation, to front load her vacation. But I don't know if, if, if I can make a motion, I don't know what's being brought to the board. Can I make a motion to, to, um, for allow her to take unearned vacation time in lieu of unpaid time off?
Yeah, she's, she's, I do not wish to borrow against my vacation time, but you're saying that that would be, you can make a motions recommending that, Jeff.
I'd like to go back to her and say that I, that I would allow for that because she's a great employee and because it would be fair that I would allow her to take unearned vacation time. I understand her letter says she doesn't want to, but I'd like to, I'd like her to know that that's an option.
Okay. Then she just won't, then she, it'll be the same thing next year, then she wouldn't have time next year. So, I mean, it's her decision too, so.
And she may, can make another request next year.
Well, she also gets floating holidays too.
Yeah.
This'll level itself off in time, plus she'll pick up the part-time benefits of a part-time employee of the village. Over time, I think this'll, she'll outrun this, this, this immediate pressing issue, I think, over time. It'll be of value to her family and herself to be a twenty hour employee of the village. But I get what you're saying, that we might have to deal with some one-off things between here and there.
Well, right. I'm not sure what, I don't, you know, I can't predict what she will do.
Yeah.
You know, she may decide that her family is more important, so.
That's right, right.
So we need a second?
I'll second.
Okay, thank you. So discussion?
Mike, what, uh, would be the policy if we fronted this vacation and the employee quit for the earned it?
We recover it on the last paycheck.
But if there wasn't enough money in the last paycheck?
We, we, we recover, we, well, you do, you do the best you can.
And your suggestion to just change the policy, what would that accomplish?
It'd prevent us from having this discussion tonight. The policy, you, you could, basically Jeff was saying, you only take a unpaid leave for a family medical, you know, family, uh, emergency, medical emergency, something like that, that like we granted in the past.
I'd be inclined to argue for flexibility for the employee.
It's, it's, it's.
A lot of underemployed people see time as a benefit. Being able to have a flexible schedule works well for some people. And that when she has been, she hasn't been in a managerial position. She's, it sounds as if she's been working under others, people, another person's supervision, perhaps yours.
I'm, I'm so sorry, I couldn't quite catch that.
My comment was that she is not in a managerial position, she's.
No, she works the circulation desk.
Which lends itself to employees covering for each other in ways that a manage, manager may not be able to do.
Right.
Is that correct?
Right.
Okay. So those would be my arguments in favor of giving some flexibility to the employee and allowing her to take the time off.
I'll stand by my remarks. Previously, I'd like to see the department have some latitude to handle these types of situations. And I understand you're, you would grant it, it were up to you, right, Susan?
But the comments?
Is that something that we can do, Mike, can we, can we have department heads have some autonomy in this arena?
Well, it's, it's up to the board. Again, I think the key is to be consistent. And, um, the, the other problem is, is that you, when you have, if the department head starts granting time off and you start, I should call it a better word, saying they're screwing around with somebody's hours and they start to, then are they underneath a certain level where they shouldn't be then earning, at what level then are you earning benefits, at twenty hours, thirty hours or forty hours? That's what, that's what, that could happen. And then it raises a question, I'm not trying to be cynical about it, if the department head can give employees off, well then it's, it's, raises a question about the local staffing. I mean.
What if we?
You know what I mean, I mean, I'm sorry.
No, what if we, uh, had a requirement that they got your approval, the village administrator?
It's, it's still to be based on some kind of policy because you have to be consistent on things like this.
And you change the policy.
Right, I mean, we'd have to be very consistent.
So you, you mean, change the policy that requires your approval, or the administrator's approval, I should say?
Right.
Under those circumstances, do you see a problem?
I, I generally would not approve unpaid leave, I think it creates, I, I'm not saying that she doesn't deserve to take the time off, to deserve to have time off. But I, I think you have to be, as, when you're sitting, when you're sitting on, you know, looking at the organization, you have to be consistent with personnel policies.
Okay.
And, and, um, I, that's just my opinion, I mean, they, the employee gets vacation time. We are now fronting them at the beginning of the year, floating holidays. You know, you, you know, they, they have the ability to plan now to take those floating holidays, that's, that's one of the main reasons why we did that. So, it's mine.
Okay, I.
I, and I, and I've read in other, no, it's a good, good question, Jerry, I've read in other personnel handbooks that the administrator has the authority, but.
Then I would change my previous statement to, I, I endorse the village administrator's recommendation.
So one difference I do see here is that this is, she's asking for a week. As opposed to the other employee was tacking days on to take a month.
She's using eight, eight, she's using your floating holiday time.
Right, yeah, yeah.
And then, um, she needs, she just needs sixteen hours, so.
What, whatever, she'll be gone a week?
Yes.
Is that right? Yeah, the other employee was gone a month.
Right.
Which to me does indicate some difference in the time gone.
I, I think what's gonna happen though, you're gonna lose your employee. I mean, I think family comes before your job.
Have you talked to her about that?
No.
Okay.
But I, I really do think, I, my personal feeling of, of that would be.
I don't know. I, I don't know.
What if we're giving her the option to take her, to, to move her vacation ahead this year? She can request it again next year and like Jeff says, eventually she won't have to request it because she will have enough to do it.
But she won't be able to do it this year.
But we can give her her vacation now. So she's not gonna lose anything. She's gonna continue to earn her wage.
You're gonna bring her up to twenty hours so that she can have vacation.
She's at twenty right now, we'll, we'll front her vacation before she's earned it, we'll give it to her. And then she can request that again next year and then maybe the third year, she'll have enough vacation time that she won't have to request. I just wanna stay consistent with what we've done in the past, I can't see, you know, I, I know it's case by case, this is a, one week versus one month. But we lost a good employee over that, yeah, I mean, maybe we'll lose a good employee over this, but we have to, I think we have to stay consistent.
Those are some good points, Eric.
Are we front, are we going down a slippery slope by front ending a vacation time like that, so far in advance? I mean, is that?
But that's kind of Jerry's point, that if some reason, you, you give her the vacation, then she leaves, you, you, and you deduct it off her last paycheck. Make the village whole.
That's the one downside, I see.
But we, we, we've done that, it, we've come out okay.
Yeah.
It's like when somebody on January first takes, they take their four floating holidays the first, not that they have done that. First, you know, floating holidays are very first week in January and they quit in the middle of February, the village, you know, collects that off their last paycheck, it's actually in the policy.
Yeah, it probably will still stay a policy until somebody does it and we get burned on it, then we'll change it.
Probably.
Further discussion?
What is the, uh, motion again? It's been kind of a long discussion.
I think the motion is to deny the request and front the vacation.
Yes.
If you didn't put front the vacation.
Right, that's.
And I'm gonna ask Mike a question on this.
Yeah.
With the situation, my wife upstairs, should I even be taking part in this conversation? I just thought of that.
Yeah, that's probably true. I didn't think of that, that's true.
Yeah.
So I probably shouldn't be the one to.
Yeah, you shouldn't, you shouldn't probably be seconding them. Yeah, we probably should.
I'll second it. I'll second.
Yeah, second, okay.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, no, it's a good point.
Totally spaced that out.
Just to keep this moving.
Any further discussion?
So we're saying now that she should, uh, take, she should change her hours to twenty hours per week then?
She, she's working twenty hours.
She's twenty right now.
All the, all the motion is doing is, where she's saying, and you're going paragraph, I do not wish to borrow, she's got equity, that, that's what the motion is. The motion is that she can borrow from future vacation time. To, so she can take off this August.
So she earns vacation time in a few months, we would be giving her that vacation time right now to use, so she wouldn't have in the future. She could ask again next August for the same thing. Again, if she wanted to.
We're saying that you can get paid in this manner.
Yeah.
Okay, that sounds, that's good, okay.
So she would be able to take the vacation, she could get the time. And quite frankly, if she does that, it comes back a year from now, I'd do the same thing.
And I'd want her to know that she is a valued employee and that's the only reason we're even, we're even entertaining this.
Yeah, true.
If she wasn't a valued employee, I think this would be a shorter conversation.
Yeah, we respect what she does and what you've told us.
Very much.
We're trying to maintain some consistency.
No, she's outstanding, she's outstanding.
Look on both sides of this and, and, uh, we certainly want her to be here, but, um, now, don't, don't know others here, but she comes back again next July and has to front another week. I mean, personally, I must say, yeah, fine. At some point in time, like Jeff said, it catches up and she.
She'll have enough vacation on the books, yeah.
And there was, there's no guarantee on next summer. And I'm one out of seven, other has nodded.
There's no guarantee on life, Steve, so.
Yeah. I don't want, I don't want her to say, oh, you said you would and then you didn't, but.
Most people vote yes.
The people that are nodding, they, they'd vote yes on it, front the vacation time again. I have a new policy on that too, don't worry.
Yes.
I saw that looking right, like, shut up, Steve.
No coming.
So we have a, a motion to deny the request and front the vacation. So let's do rule accomplished. And if this fails, then somebody could make a motion to approve the request.
Yep.
Okay, and then explain what a motion, if you say yes, deny it, that, that means then, if she gets her vacation fronted.
I think the motion is actually fronting the vacation, I think that's, I think that's what really, I think Jeff started going, going down the aisle, but then you, before you finished your motion, you actually, it's, I think it's more about fronting the vacation time.
Yeah, I wanted to be careful that I was addressing the action item.
Yeah.
And if the action item was the letter as it stands, that's one thing.
Oh.
But I, ultimately, I want her to go on vacation with her family, I wanna make that happen in a way that that's, that's fair and equitable to all the employees and so.
Right.
Ultimately, my motion is, let's get her on vacation and the way to do that is to allow her to take her vacation.
I think that's the motion.
Before she's earned it.
That's what I ruled out.
Okay.
You're finally clear on that.
So, so a yes vote is to front the vacation, move the days up, grant it to her right now.
Yeah.
Yep.
So. Go ahead.
Grunier?
Yes.
Staten?
Yes.
Brethauer?
Yes.
Poole?
I'm gonna abstain.
Harpinder?
Yes.
Udrow?
Yes.
Bolling?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. So that's six oh with one abstention. Thanks, Susan.
Thank you.
So item B adopts a two thousand fifteen, two thousand twenty capital improvement plan. Uh, the draft plan was introduced at two, two twenty-three fifteen special board meeting, we've talked about this a number of times, this moves it forward to be considered in the budget process.
So.
Second.
Thank you. Any comments from staff or?
Just thank you for all your review and work on this, I appreciate it.
Thanks to staff for all their work, you put a lot more time in on than we did.
And again, Mike, the tower is in here?
It is, yeah, I, um, I did use Randy's, I, I just wanted, as a placeholder, Jerry, it is.
Right, I mean, I, I realize that all.
I decided to put it in if I didn't lose track of it.
All these items and, and the numbers attached to them are, are just tentative, can be changed at any time.
Yeah.
But, uh, the problem with budgeting is you have to have items, you have to have amounts.
Yep. So we'd be looking at this again in the fall.
Yep.
Yep, good, okay. So I have C, discussion possible, action regarding declaring village property surplus.
I don't know if we voted on it, did we?
You had a vote?
Oh, yeah.
That's right, I'm sorry, trying to get to it. So we need a motion on that.
Oh, got him.
We got the motion, we got the second.
We didn't vote, I don't, sorry. It's okay.
So we have a motion and second to adopt the two thousand fifteen, two thousand twenty capital improvement plan. Call in verbally, say aye.
Aye.
opposed, motion carries, thank you. Everybody now?
Here we are, thank you, Steve.
Item C, discussion possible, action declaring village property surplus. A, HP DeskJet eight forty-two C, which no longer works. B, Panasonic Mini Cassette Dictation Machine no longer works. And C, the former building inspector's phone.
So move. Second.
Thank you. And for those watching, this is a routine action that we have to do to dispose of equipment, so.
So we've, we've wiped the, the inspector's phone and then, we usually give it to, um, the women's crisis center, so.
That's really nice.
So we have a motion, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, thank you. Item D, status of refunding impact fees.
So Lisa has done just a fabulous job on this, this has been a heck of a project by her. So we, we, we have the amount that we're ready to, uh, to refund, you see in the email that she sent to me. It's almost two hundred fifty thousand dollars for the water and a little less than thirty-four thousand for library. The water is so high is because the water went into effect a year earlier, two thousand three, and that's when we had a lot of building permits being issued. And then Lisa and I drafted this letter where it's gonna accompany the, uh, the check. I think people are gonna open up the check going, you know, what the heck is this? You know? So we're trying to explain it, but we're also, we have a paragraph and they're saying, you know, if you wanna give the money back, it, you know, help, so, I thought we'd ask, you know, so.
Yeah, that was a really nice touch.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, I will tell you that, um, we are meeting with the real estate agent for, uh, the property where the well would go on tomorrow at our staff meeting. And, um, not to make this complicated, but there's a, there's a point, and I know you're that chart that Matt Dragon did where he, all those different dates. Once you hit any money collected as of April eleven, two thousand six going forward, then you have to spend the fees, unless they change a lot again, within reasonable period of time. So from that April eleven, two thousand six to this time where Lisa's, you know, refunding the money, we have about ninety-nine thousand dollars left of the water impact fee. So there's a point where, and this is what we're gonna tell the real estate agent tomorrow, there's a point where as that money shrinks, we'll just, we'll just, you know, refund the rest of that money. we'll just, we'll just, you know, refund the rest of that money and get the property one that gets annexed, so, we'll, we'll decide in the next couple of months with the board whether or not we're gonna even pursue the property or not, so, if that makes sense, you know.
See, I have a friendly amendment in lieu of our conversation this evening.
Yep.
Um, and knowing that donors love to give to projects, what would you think about changing that paragraph to, if you'd like to donate to the restoration of the water tower? As opposed to refunding to the village?
Huh? Yeah.
So leave that paragraph, but an alternative would be to donate to the water tower restoration.
Just make it a specific project, you know, if you'd like to...
You mean, so the, the well, um, addition to the library or the water tower?
Have, have three items on there?
Are, are you saying add, add, keep the water, the well and the library, and then just add the water tower to it, Jeff?
Oh, what I was suggesting, I didn't think about that, um, is that one paragraph that says, if you'd like to, please consider donating these fees back to the village for future construction, yeah, I would, I guess I was thinking to make it maybe more specific for, um, for the renovation or restoration of the water tower, but, um, but I'm not opposed to how it's written now, it was just a thought.
I'd say, I see what Jeff's saying, I mean, if I got this letter, don't donate any money back to a well, eh, donate money to a library or a water tower construction, now that's exciting. You know what I mean? You gotta kinda make it a little bit more sexy for people to give their money back.
Well, we were, we were just gonna say the library, but we thought, we, we think people are actually gonna give it back to the library, we, we...
Scrap, scrap the well.
Think so?
No one cares.
Okay.
I mean, they should, but...
It's a hole in the ground that children fall into, I wouldn't wanna donate to that.
So you want us to, you want us to, um, I think it may be confusing to, to include this for the water tower downtown.
Okay, well, let, let's just say library then.
It's library, okay.
Who's anti-library?
Well, that's, well, that's what we started talking about, then we thought maybe we should put the well in here, okay.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
Wait, you think people are anti-library?
No, 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 no.
Mark is stalling over there, but you're saying no.
I think once we saw how much money we had to give back for the, for the well, it's like, oh my gosh, it's just...
We can include a picture of Susan reading to children, you know?
So, we'll, we'll do the library.
Mike, do you have a sense of what the average amount is?
Um, oh, you're gonna, I didn't, I didn't get that from Lisa. That, let me, I, she did tell me and I forgot what it is, I, I'll, I'll get that for you, I'll put it on the next agenda.
Yeah, that'd be...
I'd like to know, thank you.
Thanks, Doug.
Mike, is, I hate to put you on the spot.
Yeah.
But I, maybe I don't hate this.
Yeah, I know that.
I'm gonna do it. Would it be worth mentioning, uh, for the benefit of the public, to inform them why we're having to do this? Why, why this wasn't spent before?
Right.
And I, I know the answer, but I, I'd rather hear...
No, it's good, yeah, we should remind people.
Because it, it wasn't like there was negligence on anyone's part here.
No, no. So, so mainly the, um, the, the water one is easy, we started collecting the, the money for the new tower on Lincoln Road, that's part of that impact fee which we've spent, we're not giving any of that back. Um, and then we started collecting money for a new well on the west side as well, and just about when that property, you know, seven was gonna be, um, annexed into the village, we actually had actually spent some of the well money for, to do a, a site inspection report, because we were, that's how close we were to, uh, actually building the well, and annexing the property, and then the recession came, and, and then the, the developer, actually, I think the owner of that property sold that during the recession. Yeah, so, I mean, again, that's something, you know, easy to say, without the recession, the well would've got built probably in oh eight, and we wouldn't be sitting here doing this. I think the same thing could be said about the library, I think that, we were talking about, you know, working on the library, and I just think people, it was a hard time for those four, five, six years to spend money.
Well, it was a hard time for budgeting because we couldn't incur any more debt, because we didn't have the ability to raise taxes.
Well, the, the levies, the cap has never, never been on debt service.
Right.
But I think it was just more of a, of a, just a, a, a mental thing that people just didn't think we should be spending money during that period, we had very, very tight budgets, so... Uh, I don't blame everything on the recession, but I think it had a lot of come in, come into play, but it also, it's, 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 it's bad that you adopt a power, or a, um, fee schedule, or we wanna call it fee collection schedule, and then the state changes it four times in, in a short period of time. That didn't help either, I mean, if we, if we, if we were still based on, we adopted these fees in oh three, where we had twenty years, we'd be in good shape. But, change the rules on us.
Now the library, excuse me, impact fee, uh, interest in that? Okay, where, will you be spending that for the library? That, that just goes back to the library, that's what you could...
Well, this is the money we're giving back.
Right.
Yep.
You're giving them back thirty-three thousand?
Correct.
No, it's going back to the developers that paid the fees.
It's going back to the homeowners and prop owners that paid it.
The people who paid those fees will get it back. So the library loses that, the well loses that.
Right.
Uh, due to the circumstances.
Oh, they lose that?
Mm-hmm, yep. So, which means is when we build a library, build a well, we have to borrow more money, that's, yeah, that's the bottom line on it.
And going forward, we have the civic campus plan is up next, that includes the library, and then we can start to use some impact.
I mean, it was not gonna cover the whole project, it would've been a nice seed money for, for both projects, so...
Yeah, it's, it's kinda the way it is, so...
Yeah, yeah, I think we're doing the right thing, we had the League of Wisconsin issue note, review Matt's memo, they...
Yeah.
Uh, Dan Olson from the League agreed with it completely and thought it was very well thought out, and so, I know we're doing the right thing, first thing.
And thanks for updating everyone on that.
Sure, and, and I'll, Doug, I will get you that amount, I agree, I know the amount, but I wanna make sure I'm right, right, say that.
Thank you.
So I'll get it.
Anything else on the impact fees? Okay, we're going to item E, update, we got a space needs analysis and Van De Waal civic campus plan, Mike?
So, uh, the architect has started to meet with the department heads, and is meeting with me and Judy this, this week, and Van De Waal's also working on the civic campus plan, so, so sort of going, doing it together.
Good, great, thank you.
Any, uh, did you have any more traction on, uh, future use conversation for the building that we're sitting in?
I'm gonna actually talk to Cliff, the architect, about that on Wednesday, your suggestion, I'm gonna, yeah.
Thank you, anything else? Okay, item F, uh, letter from police union, opening of contract negotiations, the discussion villages bargaining team. So we just have a short letter that does speak in negotiation process.
And so the letter I'm gonna send back to, uh, the police union is that, um, you know, with the new chiefs hoping, you know, starting in late August, that, you know, we hold off negotiations till the end of September, beginning of October, and, uh, and have, have Kyle sit in, and so typically, it has been me, uh, the finance director, the police chief, and then sometimes the chair of the committee, or sometimes Steve and the bargaining team, and also Kyle, the labor attorney. So I don't know who wants to sit in. If you just want, at this point, just to have Kyle and me and, uh, the chief and the finance director at this point, then we, okay.
When does the contract expire?
Th- this year.
End of December?
Yes, mm, and if it doesn't get resolved, we just continue it into the next year. All right.
Okay, item G, letter from state senator John Erpenbach regarding room ta, excuse me, room tax legislation.
Um, I have not had a chance to actually read what they finally did on room tax, I don't know if Judy knows, but I, I, yeah, I know they, I think whatever they did, they, they delayed it to twenty seventeen. I, I, but, and it, a lot has to do with every, every budget, uh, period, they, uh, they lobby the hotel association, uh, they lobby the governor and the state legislators to try to make sure that the, the communities are spending that thirty percent the way they want them, want it to be spent. And I know they tweaked it, I just don't know all the details, and I'm not really worried about this at this point till we get a hotel, so...
And the chambers are complaining a lot, you can just, they, they cut out it.
Oh, okay.
They're trying to work with the chambers.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, any questions? Okay, item H, village administrators emailed the town of Oregon regarding Lincoln Road maintenance agreement.
I just wanted the board to know that I sent this to, uh, the town because they were, they had some concerns about Lincoln Road, and, uh, it was actually good because it made us go back and look at the, uh, the agreement that I think Mark and I haven't read probably in, what, fifteen years or something? And, and so it was good that, um, you know, when we do the Pacer analysis of Lincoln, Mark has to compare it to Netherwood, and, um, so it's, it's just a FYI for the board.
May I ask what Pacer stands for?
It's a pavement rating, uh, number between one and ten, ten being the best and one being the worst. Thank you.
Okay, uh, item I, updated work on Janesville Street and Wolf Street.
Let Mark do that.
Uh, work is moving along, they found, uh, just touched on it last week, but I'm at a meeting today, um, they found some unsuitable subsoils in there, so they're gonna have to overexcavate the county well. Um, our contractor was, will be required to put more gravel back in there, and we also found, once they took the pavement, or the concrete out, that the, a lot of the curb on the north side of the road was, is bad, so there'd be a lot more, um, curb replacement. Right now, we're looking at about, uh, ninety, ten thousand dollars on top of the, the project cost. And then the other thing I wanted to bring up, I forgot a bunch of this to Mike today, is, uh, the city of Madison, as you may or may not know, is gonna replace the traffic signals down there, and they wanted to bring them up, update them to the standards, and with that, there would be an additional fifteen hundred dollars to do the, the counters in there for the pedestrian crossings. And so I just wanted to let you know that unless there's opposition, I will probably authorize them to go ahead and do that as well, as part of that project. I don't have any, any true numbers on this yet, this, these are just estimates at this point, we got them today, so...
Okay.
But it's, uh, the Netherwood is going well, that, that, actually, that's, the water main is done over there, and the paving, found paving in that whole area over there, Tiff Two and Netherwood will be done next week.
Okay, good.
Mark, does that, uh, include storm source too?
On Janesville?
Yeah.
No, that's all, pretty good at work.
Okay.
Okay, any other questions for Mark? Move on to item ten, reported committees, there are none, item eleven, minutes not requiring action, we have those from Oregon Cable TV on May fifth, two thousand fifteen, and they're in the packet for people viewing. Item twelve, unfinished business, there is none tonight, item thirteen, new business, uh, approval of pending new operator licenses approved by the police department, uh, stop and go, Benjamin Link.
So moved, second.
Thank you, any questions or discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, item B, approval of renewal operator license approved by the police department, headquarters Ashley Jolson and Mesa's, Mesa's main tab, Nicole Kirkett.
So moved, second.
Thank you, any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, thank you. Item fourteen, future agenda items, notes the, uh, updates regarding the sign ordinance. Item fifteen, the village board may adjourn in a closed session during the meeting pursuant to Wisconsin statute section nineteen point eight-five-one C to discuss establishing parameters for negotiating compensation for a police chief candidate, the board will adjourn from closed sessions, any motion please?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, any questions, your call please.
Stetson?
Yes.
Harpinder?
Yes.
Udrow?
Yes.
Cool.
Yes.
Folic?
Yes.
Grunier?
Yes.
Brett Howard?
Yes.
Thank you, we'll go in a closed session, we'll stay...